Bruce gets done. Right in there, bro.
All right, we'll call to order and please join us in prayer and pledge, Bruce.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to come before you to do the people's work, give us wisdom in all that we do, and as you teach us, help us to be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to anger. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the name of God with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us up to public comment. Anyone wish to address the board at this time? Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. Well, I'm here today on behalf of the Hillsdale County Ambulance Association and Reading Emergency Unit in respect to a proposal that will be brought to your attention for vote today. I believe it's Resolution 153. We would emphatically ask you to turn that proposal down. According to the proposal, the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners, it calls for accepting a funding distribution plan submitted by Hillsdale County Ambulance Association with the understanding that $80,000 will be withheld from the proposed payment to Reading Emergency Services. The county understands that there are concerns of the timeliness of nonstat transfers from Hillsdale Hospital to other facilities for our residents who need more advanced care. So just to give you an idea, there are two options in this proposal. The two options, of course, number one is the county of Hillsdale will hire a mediator to address the concerns of both Reading Emergency Unit and Hillsdale Hospital. And the mediator reports back to the Board of Commissioners, and the mediator will be reimbursed from this $80,000. Option two is if the mediator is unable to come to any mutual agreement between the two entities, then it would be opened up to all ambulance services within Hillsdale County and outside of Hillsdale County to perform the non-emergency services for the hospital. And based on that, each service would be subsidized $100 each time that they perform the non-emergency transfer. So all of this would, this also would come out of the $80,000 as well, and so forth. Again, if option two is employed, it will be in effect from January 1st of 2020 through December 31st, 2020. If option one is in effect, it will be in effect for the life of the contract with the ambulance providers. Now, I want to emphasize at this time that when referencing non-emergency transports, those involve patients who have been hospitalized for either days, weeks, months, whatever there is, and there is no immediate need for a transfer to another facility of higher level of care. So these patients are those that have been in the hospital for a while, and there's no immediate need to medically necessary to get them out of there. Secondly, I want to mention that there are no laws requiring ambulance services to provide non-emergency services to these facilities or any facility. We are licensed to provide emergency services, and basically that's it. So the other thing too is even knowing this fact to even imply that ambulance services in Hillsdale have not been responsive to the needs of the hospital and the community is wrong. We have responded to both. We've been able to respond to emergency side and the non-emergency side. However, the non-emergency side is starting to overshadow our availability to respond to the emergent side. To even imply that the Hillsdale County Ambulance Association has not tried to work with the hospital is false. Just recently, we've had a meeting with them to discuss transfers, things of this sort. Based on our meetings with them, the Hillsdale County Ambulance Association has developed a collaborative schedule whereby three services in the county take specific days to provide these non-emergency transfers for the hospital itself. And also acknowledging the difficulty in getting their patients out of Hillsdale Hospital, you know, in 2014, Reading Emergency Unit offered. We provided them with an agreement for, to place an ambulance strictly dedicated for non-emergency calls, and we were turned down by the hospital. So unfortunately, with these non-emergency transfers, they take a lot of time. They utilize the resources, and when I say they take a lot of time, they take anywhere from four to six hours depending on where the patients have to be transferred to. It's not always close. Now, in 2017, we were approached by a number of representatives from cities, villages, townships throughout Hillsdale County because of their concern of the timeliness in handling emergency calls. Some of this was due to our non-emergency transfers from Hillsdale Hospital. Not all, but some were. And so based on those meetings that we had with them, the Hillsdale County Ambulance Association decided that we need to work on enhancing our emergent services. So throughout our campaign, we laid the foundation on basically three things. Number one, we wanted to increase our ambulance coverage to handle these emergent calls. We wanted to decrease our response times. And we wanted to also offer the residents of Hillsdale County no out-of-pocket expense for emergent services, for emergent services. So I think it's important to also mention that at this time when we were beginning this campaign, we reached out to the hospital because it's always been our goal as part of this is not only to increase our resources for emergent cases, but also the non-emergent. But those non-emergent cases should not overshadow or compromise somebody that may need it. Think about your own families. Think about somebody in your family who really may need an ambulance in an emergent situation, and knowing that that ambulance is off transporting someone to a tertiary facility, whether it be care facility or whatever the case is, and you have to wait an extended period of time for another ambulance to come in. A lot of times, you don't have that luxury. You don't have the luxury of waiting, and you want that ambulance there as quickly as possible. So I think it's also important to mention that when we reached out to Hillsdale Hospital, specifically, we reached out to the president of Hillsdale Hospital, asking for their support. In this village, they refused. They refused. Knowing that they have a problem, we're trying to deal with the emergent side, and they refused. Over a period of one year, we've met with Commissioners Gaines and Commissioners Kazwell in order to try to reach an amicable strategy and a good contract amicable to both parties. And during those meetings, we were emphatic that the contract should be specific to emergency services, emergency services. When we met here in April, during that time, that was the first time that we had mentioned that, and again, unfortunately, Commissioner Kazwell said, "Well, we need to do what we can to tie in the non-emergency services." At that time, we told him, "Look, let us deal with that between the ambulance services. This should have nothing to do with this county contract. Let the ambulance services continue to deal with that between us and the hospital." In a subsequent meeting held on August 6th, the Ambulance Association again unanimously expressed to Commissioners Gaines and Kazwell that this contract should remain for emergent services in Hillsdale County. At your 11, actually November 12th Board Commissioners meeting, in addition to a few minor language changes which we had no problem with and so forth, again, I refer to Commissioner Kazwell's statement that according to the board's legal counsel, this contract, meaning the contract that they had from the EMS, included non-emergency transfers. On 11/16, we received an email from Commissioner Kazwell indicating that he was wrong in making that statement. And I believe that was prompted by a question from Chairman Wiley about what about transfers, and perhaps the definition or whatever on transfers got lost, whatever the case is. But again, this contract does not cover non-emergency transfers. So on November 26th, Commissioner Gaines presented the EMS contracts to the Hillsdale County Ambulance Association for signature. Ironically, the contracts were signed by Chairman Wiley and Marty Cast and dated 11/12. Hillsdale County Ambulance Association members refused to sign that. Why? Because of the fact that the two exhibits referenced in that contract had not been approved, specifically the one showing the allocation numbers that were reviewed and approved by the ambulance association. That's like asking us, "Oh, look, you need to buy it so you know what's in it."
We don't mean to interrupt you, but I've allowed you extra time by our board rules.
I appreciate that.
We allow five minutes. You've had about eight, so.
That's fine.
Close it. Close it up.
You get the right. So again, it comes down to this. We're asking you to approve the resolution as we have presented it with the numbers that we have presented. Let the Hillsdale County Ambulance Association deal with the hospital, period. We are willing to do that. We are willing to do that, and we'll work with them as much as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time?
I do.
Your name, sir?
Orlando Blanco. Indeed, yes. Interesting full disclosure, I'm an attorney. I represent Reading. I've represented Reading in several matters. As you know, I've authored an opinion letter preceding this hearing today back in August, which I believe has been shared with all of you. And I try to take in since then, since August, I guess the last four or five months, everything that's been going on and has been shared by your board and so forth. My background is in EMS, so I've been an EMS lawyer now for 38 years. I like to call myself a different kind of ambulance chaser. And I hope I can give you a little bit of insight from my background in terms of what you're trying to do here. Obviously, I represent a client in this, but a bigger, my, a bigger purpose here is really you making the right decision because you have an awesome responsibility. You're about to establish an ambulance service agreement that is going to affect this entire community. And as Dave Slifka has already pointed out, the primary purpose, in fact, I would say the exclusive purpose of that ambulance service agreement is to provide emergency medical services to your community. He used the example of what would happen to one of you, if one of your family members was in need of an ambulance service. And you know, my, my experience has been in the years that people don't internalize it. They don't think it's ever going to happen to them, but you have a greater responsibility than looking out for yourself. You have a responsibility of making a determination that's going to be appropriate for the entire county, for the entire community that service will be. That includes children, elderly, people who work, a child that might not be able to breathe and needs immediate attention. And I think that from my perspective, everything that I've read here, there's been a mass confusion, in my view, of what the purpose of that Hillsdale County village proposal was for and where you've ended up with this proposal today. I've read that proposal. As you know, I've authored an opinion on that proposal. And that proposal was for continued funding for ambulance services within the county of Hillsdale as approved by the voters in 2012. So there was already an established ambulance service agreement in 2012, and you were proposing to the public to continue the funding of that ambulance service agreement. I think it's absolutely clear that the 2012 agreement did not include and did not provide for ambulance transfers, as we call them. And the proof of that is clearly that that wasn't provided, that service wasn't provided as part of that agreement. And I think what's happened now is in the new proposal, there's this reference to the term ambulance services or EMS services, which by the way, does not appear in the statute. Nowhere in the Emergency Medical Services Act or anywhere in the statutes in the laws of Michigan are you going to find a definition of ambulance services. Ambulance operation is defined under Section 20902 Subsection 5 of the MSA, which is, as you know, MCL 333.20902 subsection 5 defines an ambulance operation to include a person who is licensed to provide both emergency medical services response and transport for profit or otherwise. But that's a licensing provision. I just recently did a brief to the Michigan Supreme Court on behalf of the Michigan Association of Ambulance Services on this very subject, on the subject of what a licensed life support agency is licensed and authorized to do in Michigan. The fact that Reading and other ambulance services that service your community are licensed and authorized to provide both emergency medical services response and transport for profit or otherwise does not mean that that's what this funding is for. And it doesn't. Certainly, that was not the proposal that was brought to the public in this case. I don't know how many members that are here are members of the public, but I assure you that if you ran a poll and you asked every individual who voted in favor of that village, they, what they thought they were getting is an ambulance responding, a funding for responding to emergency medical services, not for funding a private entity's operational expenses, in this case, the hospital's expenses in transferring patients in and out of that facility. That's not what this village was for, any more than what if I came to you here and say, and said if the proposal was that you were going to fund from this ambulance village, the anesthesiology residency program at Hillsdale Hospital. But nobody on this board could logically vote for such a proposal and say that you were going to fund the private anesthesiology residency program for the hospital. It's the same thing with ambulance transfers. The hospital, like all other hospitals, by the way, in Michigan, contract for those services individually. And what you're doing here is you're funding, you're proposing to fund that through this ambulance village, which is, in my view, as I stated in my opinion from August, illegal. It's unlawful. It's, it's not.
Sir, as I indicated today, we allow five minutes for public comment, and you're at seven, so.
I'm at seven, okay.
Yeah, so if you could wind it up, please.
I apologize. So my, my position is clear. I think just the last thing I would say to you, just as an EMS lawyer, I've represented a lot of different groups from public to private, people of your position and so forth. You're taking $80,000 from a, from the public, basically funding of this ambulance, emergency, a very vital service, which I, I mean, I, that's for the contract people to decide what they're going to do, but that's, that's a big chunk of dollars coming out of, you know, funding of your emergency medical services is not only unlawful, it's not a wise decision on your part. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Tim?
Hi. I want to be brief because I could echo a lot of what they've said.
Well, they've used up your time.
Okay. I too made an offer to the hospital about placing an ambulance there for a summary ER to do the transfers, and that was, which was turned down. You know, to break this down a little bit, what the hospital is asking us to do is take care of patients that they can't deal with at the hospital, bottom line. They don't have the facilities or the personnel to deal with these people. But now it seems to, from the work, I haven't been a part of this contract from the day one, but what I picked up once I did take, because I was sitting in this seat, which I did take over, is the fact that we're going to be penalized, well, I guess we broke it down to reading, for we don't have the facilities or the personnel or the equipment to take 100% of these transfers. And you're taking a hospital issue and dumping it onto the ambulance companies. And because they don't have, and I'm not knocking hills at hospital, you know, there's hospitals in the area that can't deal with that. I understand that. But don't start taking money from the ambulance companies because this money was voted in with the intent to enhance our emergency services so we can better deal with the emergency and non-emergency transfers. You can take, probably, we've gotten over 90% average of the emergency transfers taken out of a hospital in a timely manner, emergency transfers. And you can't find a hospital anywhere in the area that can say anything different if they're better than that, you know. We have dealt with it. I would ask this board to consider, let's put this, this ambulance agreement forward as intended, the money spent as intended, let's give it a year, look at it a year from now, which we're going to do anyhow, and let us work with the hospital as we've tried to do. This has got to be a two-way street. We can't just say the hospital doesn't want to deal with transfers, so let's blame the ambulance companies. Because that's what's happening. The hospital's not really playing involved. We had a meeting with them. We asked for information. They had no information for us. You know, I don't know what the meeting was about, to be honest with you. There's a couple of people arguing, and you know, we finally just got tired of listening to that. Let's move forward. What are we going to do? We need this data, and they need to provide that for us. You know, I just, I don't, I want to use the word ridiculous, but I think that's where we are. Let the ambulance companies continue to work with the hospital. This will force the hospitals to work with us if they want us to continue to do this. We can do what we can do with the equipment and the finances we have. That was the intent of pumping that village up to where it is because that'll help our emergency services.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
My name's Jim Stevens. I'm a resident of District 11. I'm the county council director of EMS for Hudson Area Ambulance, which covers your Jefferson and Pittsburgh Township. So you can see I'm a well-informed citizen, I guess, on this thing. I encourage especially Commissioner Brown to take a look at that and kind of look at, for the citizens' sake, I know the challenges that it takes for Hudson to come all the way from where they're at and do mutual aid for you deep into your citizens' area because my ambulance service, which is Reading, may be out on doing these transfers and not able to provide the emergency service. So I know the challenges, what that does to Pittsburgh and Jefferson Township by tying up the ambulance that's covering their area, also what it's going to do to me if I have a heart attack out there on Dunrood and there's no ambulance available and I'm waiting for 40 minutes. So I think if you're serious, then take a look at that for the better of the citizens. They're, they're paying for an emergency service. I encourage you to vote and eliminate the $80,000 and do it. And go along with the good faith. You probably haven't heard the, the good faith talk that went on during all these contract things, that we will work with Hillsdale Town, or Hillsdale Hospital to try to work on their needs as well as the needs of the emergency service people. And I think that's an important thing. And just kind of spend the money where it's at. We sat at that point four or five for many, many years, which was underfunded. We had outstanding support from the community when we decided to go up. That's going to allow all ambulance services hopefully to put more personnel on, more man-hours to help the emergency service part of it, which in turn will also help the non-emergency thing because the personnel are available. So I encourage you to kind of do away with the, taking my public money that I voted yes for and giving it to a private entity. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else?
John Smith, Somerset Center. I just, he actually was saying, I mean, I don't think it's a good idea to pay for a taxi service for our private business. I think we're just stepping out of the line for our government here. Again, I agree to vote on emergency services for that as well, and I don't think it's a good idea to use money for our private taxi business. That's it.
Anyone else wish to address the board at this point?
Penny Swan, Hillsdale. I will agree with everybody else. I'm a little confused how shifting funds can be legal. Evidently, it can't, with one opinion. People voted on this for emergencies, and I don't see how paying for non-emergency transfers are what people voted on. It's clearly evident that they've tried to work with Hillsdale Hospital, and they had it, played ball with them or tried to work things out. One story, my brother in 2005 had a massive heart attack and went to the ER. We waited two and a half hours for an ambulance because they were out on another transfer. Whether it was an emergency, I don't know. Two and a half hours. The, two minutes after we got to Toledo, he rolled over and died in front of my sister and me. So there, it's been a problem for a long time, but citizens paying for non-emergency transfers is just wrong. Hillsdale's a poor county. They can't afford that, and we need emergency services. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board at this time? We will have another public comment at the end of the meeting. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, Moon, I want to pull 19147.
And you'd like to move that where?
Wherever your pleasure is, sir.
I will let you explain why you're pulling it then. It's under you. Move it under Ruth.
Okay.
Any other, Julie moved to support it. Do we have, or accept it? Do we have a support with 147 pulled?
I second that.
Thank you. Any other additions or corrections on the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda with 147 moved down under Ruth signify to say a aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, correspondence is listed. Any comments on correspondence?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The stuff that we got from the medical examiner.
Yes.
Is an individual on there that I think you need to investigate further for an autopsy. I'll talk to you about it after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. The bill came, I pulled the The bill came, I pulled the bill out, you move for question now.
Okay. We can look into that. Okay, anything else on correspondence? Excuse me, here it is. Brings us to regular agenda.
Mark?
Yes.
I want a poll, 19-152.
And?
Table it to another.
I'll take care of that when we get into it.
I don't want to get into it, I want to discuss it.
I'll take care of that when we get to it.
Do you want to table it then?
Yeah.
We could table it then.
We could table it when it comes up.
You don't want to table it, because then you've got to have a 80% vote. I'm going to take care of that when I get to it under my report.
You're good with that?
Well...
I know you're not...
I just feel, I just feel like, I just feel like I'm not ready to talk about it yet and discuss it.
You're not going to have to.
So, um...
You aren't going to have to.
In my opinion, if we table it, then we can discuss it with the respective person as we decided earlier, talk to that personnel and the department, and then come back. If you table it for another meeting.
It would have to be tabled when it's presented.
That's fine.
Exactly.
Just, it needs to be withdrawn. Don't table it. Needs to be withdrawn, Doug.
Okay, let's withdraw it then.
Well, let's, let's withdraw it when it comes to it.
You can withdraw it now or you can, or Bruce can withdraw it after his report.
Let's withdraw it now.
Then withdraw it now.
Withdraw it.
Withdraw it.
And I will talk to Doug here in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. That works.
Mr. Chairman, I have some changes to the agenda, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Hey, I would like to remove Resolution 19-156, which is under my portion of the agenda, which is, has my name on it, but I did not submit that resolution. And I would like to replace it with the original resolution I submitted, which is now named I would also ask that I remove Resolution 19-153, as it correlates with the resolution I just removed, and would no longer apply.
We need a motion to accept the agenda with those changes. Right now?
Please accept the agenda as amended.
I'm trying to write notes.
Commissioner Gaines has moved to accept the agenda as amended, which means withdrawing Resolution 19-152, withdrawing Resolution 19-156, withdrawing Resolution 19-153, and adding Resolution 19-161.
Okay, that's the motion. Do we have a support? The motion dies for lack of support. We're still working on the regular agenda.
I move that we, I said that I wanted to withdraw 19-152.
Okay.
And I'm good with that.
Just that?
Just that.
No second thought.
Okay, so the regular agenda with the withdrawal of 152 is the motion on the table at this point?
I still want to commit Resolution, add Resolution 19-161.
Now let's...
That has to break through.
Yeah, you can come back to that, Julie. Let's move, or let's vote on this change at this point and then we'll take one, you know, we'll take a, because I've actually got one myself. So we'll come back to you if you would, please. So it's been moved to withdraw 152. All those in favor of withdrawing 152 signify to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Julie?
Again, I want to remove Resolution, and I am removing, because I have the right to do it, 19-156 from the agenda, because I did not submit that, even though it has my name on it, I'm repeating that, and I am presenting Resolution 19-161 in its place. And I also ask that we remove 19-153, because it no longer applies once 19-156 is not presented.
Julie, that's the same motion that we just had lack of support two minutes ago. Let me offer a suggestion to you that we leave, we leave the ones on there and we just add 161 for a comparison, and we can work this out as we go into this discussion.
Well, we're not going to leave 19-156, Mark, because I did not submit that, even though my name is on it, I did not submit it.
That's right.
And no other commissioners submit that under my name on the agenda. So it has to be removed by the rules of the board.
19-156, when I presented, when you asked me to speak with Marty, she said, where do you want to put it? And I told her, it doesn't make any difference to me. She probably put it under her name. If you want to move it up underneath my name, that's fine. She's right, she didn't submit it. What she's saying, Marty put it there because it was, probably because it was her committee. So if you want to move it up under me, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
If there is a submission of a document and does not have the rightful signature, how is it presented in Commissioner Gaines' name? Forgive me if I'm correct.
The chairman puts together, by our board rules, the chairman puts together the agenda, and the clerk has been assisting us for a number of years, and it's put together and then sent out.
So could it be a flaw, that her name is being put in there?
No, it's, it's not uncommon that Marty or I will, or both of us, will figure out where an item goes and put it under that commissioner, you know?
But usually the commissioner has the knowledge and the permission for you to do that. You cannot enter things under other people's names without their knowledge and permission. It's rule and procedure of the board. So...
I had, I've had different things that, as he explained, been put under my name and I find out about it when the agenda comes out.
So that's happened to me before too. But I would, in this particular circumstance, I would agree with Julie that I understand what Commissioner Gaines is saying, that there's something in the packet that doesn't, you know, that has her name on it that she didn't submit, and that's a good point that you're making, Julie, and I agree with that. So I would say with what Commissioner Caswell just said, that we should take her name off of it and put it under his name, that's what he just said, and correct that so that it is under his name, and that has happened before, and it's just like what he just said. I've had times when I've come up here and something's been in the packet and it had my name on it, because it was my committee and they put my, they're trying to figure out where to put it. And so that, that happens sometimes, but we can correct that right now and we can go ahead and we can put that under Bruce's, take her name off of it and put it under Bruce. Is that all right, Mark?
It's fine.
Did you want to amend it and take a vote on it?
Well, if we're going to add 161 in under Julie and move...
But I didn't say, I didn't say to add 161.
Okay.
I said, I'm talking about 156.
Yeah.
And I said, we should take Julie's name off of it and put Bruce's name on it, because she's making a point that, that that was submitted with her name and it's not her. So...
That's right.
So I move that we take Julie's name off, Commissioner Gaines' name off of 19-156 and put Commissioner Caswell's name on it.
I second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
And then we could add... Should we put it under, should we put it under your...
Sure.
Put it under, we'll put it under Bruce's, we'll move it up under Bruce.
Okay.
And then also you have to add the resolution that I originally had in there that was pulled and then put in the one without my name on it, was put in without my permission. You have to add 19-161. Well, that resolution that should have been placed on the agenda under my name and was pulled without my permission. Okay, let's make that a separate motion, Julie. It's not a motion. It is a motion. I'm making a motion right now.
We've got a motion on the floor.
For 19-156 to be under Bruce's name and to put it under Bruce's report, so we're correcting the error that your name was on it. That's a separate mo, that's all we're voting on for this right now.
Further discussion on the motion to move 156 and change the name on it? All those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one, passes. Okay, we're still on the regular agenda.
Once again, I make motion to add 19-161, which was the original resolution that was supposed to be placed under my name that was pulled without my permission, which should have been in the agenda.
If that's a motion, I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to add 161 under Julie's report. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify to say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Fails three to two? We'll take care of that later. Anything else on the regular agenda?
I just have to say, Julie, I'm sorry, you know, you're the one that brought up the error of 19-156, and I made a motion to try to correct that because I was agreeing with you, and then you voted against it. So I'm a little confused. I was, you know, I'm agreeing with you and I was trying to correct it and then you voted against it, so... No, I voted not, it should have been pulled from the agenda completely removed, not moved. I don't, that is not the formula that the ambulance, I'm trying to... Right, right. The original resolution that I submitted now has not been denied to be on the agenda, which is totally wrong and against the board rules.
I'm looking at the board rules. I'd like you to cite where that's at, Julie, because I can't find it.
See, and where I'm, where I have a problem... From the agenda, a resolution that I put forward under my committee, under my name. It was pulled and this 156 was replaced without my knowledge and permission. You cannot do that. Right, but, but 161, we got handed 161 when we walked in here this morning. Jody handed us it. That's because of the timing of the meeting room, and the package didn't come out until 4:41 on Friday, and it was already published and I had no way to fix it. And that was without my permission that that 156 was entered. Commissioner Caswell pulled my Resolution 161, which used to be 156, and put it in my, in the place of mine. That is not allowed. This is against the rules and procedures of the board. Where does it say that in the rules? Cite it, cite the, cite it in the rules. I don't have the copy in front of me, Bruce. Okay, okay. Well, I'm just trying to be fair to everybody and I'm trying to follow the rules. Well, it's not fair. It's not fair because my resolution was in the package and it was pulled by someone else. It does not, Bruce doesn't have any authority to pull my resolution from the agenda. I didn't pull your resolution from the ag... Do that. Huh?
She said Bruce.
Oh, Bruce, okay, I was going to say, I didn't pull your... Okay, so, so, okay, we have a motion on the floor right now to do what now?
We don't have any motion on the floor.
The motion failed.
There's no current motion.
There's no motion on the floor.
We're still discussing the regular agenda.
Okay, well, I just think that, all I know is that when, when we all walked in here this morning at nine o'clock, Jody handed us all commissioners a 161. So this is the first that I've seen of 161 and the first of me having any knowledge of it. I didn't know, you know, on the agenda, there's 156. And so you're, and so to me, it's like now you're trying to add this and I, and I didn't know what happened. Well, I explained what happened. Well, now, yeah, yeah, right. Now you're, now we're getting it right now, but we're in the middle of the meeting, so it's like...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, you may.
For the integrity of the board, if there, I know the motion failed to place the 19-161, and that would express Commissioner Gaines' facts and also would give some kind of leverage for our taxpayers to understand what the conflict is going on. Because the fact of the matter is, this is all about the taxpayer today. And if we are to do any justices for them, so we have two things going on here, and within all this fight, I don't believe the taxpayers need to not know as to why this was pulled and why the other was not introduced. And for the sake and the integrity of the public and the guests who have come, who have given us an idea about what the millage is for, what was voted upon. So for that, I know the motion failed to have the 161, but to express Commissioner Gaines, I believe that either you suggest that this would be accommodated, or she needs to still finish expressing what that 19-161, which was just brought in this morning, that would put across the taxpayers.
Well, if I may, since I'm being dragged through the mud, I was asked by the chairman to win and adjust the ambulance distribution of the ambulance millage based upon the proposal in 19-153. So I did that. Okay, I didn't withdraw anything. I win as I was told to do and changed it according to this proposal, 19-153. Marty then asked me, under whose name should it go? And I said, I don't care, it's up to you to figure that out, just as we explained earlier. That's how this came about.
Right.
And I, I think, I think it bears... Bruce and I are both prepared to discuss this at some length. We've had, I've had some communication with the hospital and with Mr. Slifka over the last several days. We've got some new information. I think there's some resolve that'll come to this. I don't think we need to be too hasty in what we pull or what we add, because some of this will resolve itself based on what, some of the things that Bruce handed out earlier that, and I've got a copy of a couple of things that will be discussed. So with that said, I think we need to approve the agenda as amended and move on.
I agree. I support, I move that we approve the agenda, we approve our agenda.
So you've moved to approve the agenda as amended?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second it. I'll second.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda as amended signify to say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Four to one, we'll move on. Go ahead. It's not 9:10, but it's 10, didn't it?
In the last nine months, I've learned a lot about the County Road Commission. I found the commissioners, the four at the top, are less than honorable, and I found them to make up stories and not follow reasonable and customary accounting practices for a business of their nature. Last April, the road commission closed Cooper Road as a culvert footer had cracked and some of the road washed down across the north side of the drain crossing Cambria 1, number 14. Spring turned into summer, then fall. I went to a road commission meeting and asked if the Cooper Road project was going to get done. I went to a Road Commission meeting and asked if the Cooper Road project was gonna get done this year. And then they said, "Probably next year." They spoke for the rough year that I've had with the spring rains. I asked about, "Have you got the three bids for the replacement culvert?" "No." I asked John Saunders, "But we will get them. It should take a couple of weeks." So, five to six months into this road closure and now they're starting to look for a culvert. September 9th came around and we received a contract proposal. We have a 50-50 split in cost sharing for these type of ventures. I went to the Road Commission and asked John for the three bids for the culvert. He assured me he would get them to me. Looking at the other particulars, the one price I couldn't get out of my head was $7,500 a day for a four-man crew. That just... Maybe it's just me. In October, at our monthly township meeting in Cambria, on the budget, on the agenda was to amend the budget for our 50% of this cost that the Road Commission has come up with. There was no motion brought to the floor. Like, it just died. There was no motion, there was no second. Apparently, the board thinks there's something wrong with that $7,500 a day, too. There- I got a call a couple of days after this meeting from Julie Gaines and she was at the commission- at the Road Commission meeting and wanted to know why I wasn't there with a signed contract. And I told her that we just- I couldn't get a motion. So, I asked them to set up a meeting for October 25th at 3:00 PM with the board. Both boards get together, we can talk this up. So, October 25th at 3:00 PM, John Saunders and William Watkins represented the Hillsdale County Road Commission, trustee Eric Baumgartner, clerk Carol Rosales, and myself were in attendance for Cambria Township. I opened the discussion with my concern for the $7,500 a day for a four-man crew. I said, "This may be a good price for New York City, but this is Hillsdale County." I asked John Saunders, "How much an hour do you charge for your equipment for this job?" He gave me every price per hour of excavator, backload, trucks, trailers, even the radios to be used on this project. I took the information and multiplied it by eight hours. The total came out to a tad over $3,000. My next question to John was, "Where does the other $4,500 come into play?" John did tell us that he figured for three and a half days' work, $9,000 in labor, $12,000 for fringe benefits, and $14,000 for equipment. I asked for a more itemized item of a bill so we, as a board, could fully understand how the Hillsdale County Road Commission arrived at the $7,500 figure. And again, asking for three bids for the culvert, to send the itemized bill to me or just drop it off at my house. Then John told us, "There never were three bids for the culvert and we only buy culverts from one place." I know as a township, we get three bids, four bids, but one bid seems to lead to corruption, at least it did with Union. So, let me see here. It's now December 26th. Two months and one day since the township made a request for information to make a proper evaluation to the scope of this project. As of today, no contact has been made or attempted by the Hillsdale County Road Commission to show us any kind of transparency and true costs of the Cooper Road project. John also told us at our meeting that the Michigan Department of Transportation makes us write these contracts in this form. And everything on this paper was because the Michigan Department of Transportation makes us do this. I'm probably an idiot, but I went to the Michigan Department of Transportation in Jackson and I talked to a guy for about an hour up there. He's a really nice fellow. And I asked him about, "Let me see this template you have for every Road Commission in the state of Michigan" to how they put quotes and job bids together. And he said, "There's no such thing." He said, "We don't- we don't force them into a certain way of writing their bills." I also asked him, "What would happen? What would happen if there was a school involved on this road? Would this have any priority or urgency?" He said, "When a school is not in session, it would be a very high priority. When a school is in session, it goes to the top of the list." Not in our county. There's not a school on Cooper Road, but not in our county. It's just pushed away. Let me see here. When our constituents called the Hillsdale County Road Commission and asked about Cooper Road, they tell our constituents that the township was holding things up. Another lie. As a board, we are going to local excavator companies to bid to do the Cooper Road project since the Hillsdale County Road Commission has shown a lack of interest in being transparent in how they arrive at this project's cost. As I previously stated before this board, we are quite fortunate. The snows have held off. Then the Amish kids that drive their pony carts to school on Cooper Road have not had to trek out onto Reading Road or Carpenter Road or Cambria Road to come to school. Usually, they go up Lilac Road to Cooper Road and they go. But when the snow has come and the drift's shut and they can't go through that field anymore, there's gonna be trouble. And I don't know who's gonna be on the hook for it, but it's not gonna be Cambria Township. Another reason we need to get this road opened back up is there's a fellow that sells cattle and pigs by the truckload, by a silo, truckload. And what happens is, the guy has to pull in now off of Reading Road, come into Cooper Road, turn in the driveway, they load the stock. He has to back out onto Reading Road, which is quite a accident wait for a place to happen, shall we say. The road needs to be reopened and I have an idea to get us through until spring. It's probably not perfect. The Road Commission probably won't approve it. But at this point, I think they've abandoned us. I don't wanna see the sheriff or the first responders have to respond to a bunch of cattle or hogs that got hit by a truck and are loose in the road or kids that are going to school, picking up parts of the carts and trying to get these kids to a hospital. It's just ridiculous what's going on. And that's- that's my story. We take our fiduciary responsibility very seriously and I'm not so sure the Road Commission does. You have any questions?
I have a question, Glenn, if I may. Have you taken this to the Road Commission? Because it's about time that we need you to have them here and respond to all of this because it's been over nine months. The last, when you had tapped, I remember it was over nine months, on this issue. Whether it's Amish or anybody, you know, they're all important. They're constituents. So, what is their response to you?
They won't talk to us anymore. It's been two months. It's not that hard. They know where I live. They- this is- this is kind of their- their way that maybe that's how they do business. They just stick their head in the dirt and hope that the- it gets so bad that with pressure on our township board that we're gonna pay these extortion prices. In- just in Williams County, there was a project down there and I found it by accident. I was going down to buy some pigs and I'm going down this road and it's paved road and it's all- there's a, you know, bump there. Big culvert, old ugly-looking rusty culvert hanging out on the side of the road. These guys put in a 60-foot culvert. So, I asked the guy that I was getting the pigs from about the project, "How much did that cost?" 'Cause I'm really interested in how much things cost, first things. And he told me that whole project cost $16,700. The problem with the Road Commission is they jack these prices up so high that this is supposedly a $52,000 project. I wore on the hook for half of it. And when I showed, just by their numbers, using their numbers, that it was only $3,000 for the equipment, there's- there's just... Maybe I'm the only supervisor that's multiplied everything by eight hours or something. I don't know. I'm not throwing our money away. I'm just not gonna do it. And our board's not gonna do it either. I mean, they put out here $2,000 for topsoil seed mulch. This isn't my country, guys. The weeds will grow quick. I just thank you for letting me speak because I think this is important. I don't know how many other townships just get the bill and say, "Well, we better pay it." Okay.
I appreciate you coming in, Glenn, and I know you and I talked that you wanted to use this format to, you know, express everything and we appreciate you coming in and as you're well aware, we have no direct authority over them.
I get that, I get it.
But Julie, I know is listening and she can once again take your concerns back to them and...
Because I had the fellow, Mr. Watkins, or not Mr. Watkins, but Mr. Parnik came to our meeting last month, or this month. And, "You got anything for us?" "No." So, I'm not even sure he's aware of our meeting that we had with them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
I move to enter closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268E to discuss settlement, trial strategy, and pending litigation, Western District of Michigan case number 19-CV-209-PLM. Discussion in open session would be detrimental to the county's position.
I second that.
We'll call a vote. Bruce, Commissioner Carla?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
All right, at this time, we would ask that all our guests step out and would you please make sure Dave stops recording?
We can go back to recording.
Okay, so I move to follow the recommendation of our council.
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passes page zero. And we'll continue to move on as I indicated to all of you in an email. We will take up the ambulance discussion regardless of the order of the agenda so that Julie doesn't have to be on the phone all day.
Except we moved it under Bruce.
Right. We're gonna let him start and we'll move right on into it.
So you want me to start with 19-153?
Well, you can either start with that or start with your statement or however you want to go. I guess, I think starting with your statement would be more appropriate.
Okay. This statement has to do with the proposal to handle hospital transfers.
Julie, can you hear?
People keep rushing papers and stuff. It's hard to hear. I need everyone to sit still, please, and be quiet.
Can you talk loud, Bruce, so she can hear?
Okay. First of all, I want to start with three clarifying statements. Statement one, no millage money is going to Hillsdale Hospital. None. Hillsdale Hospital will not touch one cent of the millage money. The proposal in option two of the resolution is for the, and this is the resolution 153, is for the money to go to any ambulance provider that transfers patients, our Hillsdale County residents, to other hospitals when needed. Statement two, option two of the resolution 153 is based on the funding proposal being advanced by the Ambulance Association. This new funding proposal wants the money distributed according to the geographical areas covered by that particular ambulance service. If the commissioners support this proposal of the Ambulance Association, then it follows that since Hillsdale Hospital is in the geographical area of Reading Emergency Unit, only REU should be affected by the proposal in option two of the resolution. The other ambulance services are held harmless because their geographical areas do not include Hillsdale Hospital. This option has nothing to do with implying malfeasance on the part of Reading Emergency Unit, nor should anyone read that into it. Statement three, the millage proposal before the voters in 2018 stated that the money was to be used for ambulance services. That's what was on the ballot. The county has a legal opinion from our attorney, which I've handed out to all three of you, and which has been shared with the ambulance providers and is available today to anyone, clearly stating that paying this millage money out can only be done for ambulance services and nothing else. It also clearly states that transfers from Hillsdale Hospital to other facilities are ambulance services and thus eligible for some of the money if whoever does the transferring signs a contract with the county. Option two of the resolution states that Hillsdale Hospital will be required to first call Reading Emergency Unit for any transfers and then the other in-county ambulance services before calling any out-of-county ambulance services. This is to make sure that our in-county ambulance services have the opportunity to handle these transfers before out-of-county ambulance services are contacted. Now, I'll continue. I will now explain the resolution we have before us. With the rewrite of the ambulance contracts, a lot of issues were cleared up between the ambulance providers and Hillsdale County. This is a good thing. The contracts are for three years with the ability to open them up at the end of each year to review any problems that may have arisen. The allocation of the millage funds is a separate issue from the contracts. Now, Julie has just made the point that the contracts contain in the fact that the Ambulance Association will submit to us a proposal for allocating the funds, which is in fact true, but it is our responsibility as commissioners to either accept it, reject it, modify it, whatever. In considering the allocation of the funds, the commissioners should understand that there is one outstanding problem we all need to work on. That problem is the issue of hospital transfers. Our citizens are seeing quite long waits before they move to a more appropriate facility. The resolution before us attempted to try and lessen this problem for our citizens in two different ways. First is option one of the resolution. It requires the county to hire a mediator to sit down with both Hillsdale Hospital and Reading Emergency Unit to try to work out a solution to this transfer problem. The idea is that a pair of outside eyes may be able to see things and make suggestions to alleviate this problem that the rest of us have not seen. If both parties are amenable to this, then the $80,000 proposing to be withheld from Reading Emergency Unit's requested allocation would go toward paying for whatever solution is proposed. Again, this millage money can only be used for ambulance services. In addition, I have a private benefactor who is willing to pay out of his or her own pocket up to $3,000 to cover the cost of the mediator. The mediator cannot be paid for with the millage funds. I want to make that very clear, cannot be. Next is option two of the resolution. If either party rejects mediation, then option two would be considered by the commissioners. Under this option, any ambulance provider would be paid an additional $100 per run on top of any insurance as a financial incentive to take the transfers from Hillsdale Hospital. They would have to sign a contract before being paid any money. These providers would include Reading Emergency Unit, Wright Waldron, Hudson, Addison, and Somerset, as well as any out-of-county ambulance providers. The money would go directly to the ambulance ser, to the ambulance services from the county. Hillsdale Hospital would not touch the money. If Reading Emergency Unit continues to provide the same level of service or transfers to Hillsdale Hospital as they have this year, they would receive about $32,000 of the $80,000 being set aside. That's about 40 percent. The $100 per run, $100 per run was figured based on what is being paid out now this year to the ambulance providers on a per-run basis. Since Hillsdale Hospital has about 800 transfers a year, it would take about $80,000 to cover the costs for the ambulance providers for one year. This heck extra $100 per one would help to defray the costs for extra mileage and time involved in those transfers that the ambulance service providers would incur. Option two of the resolution would end after one year. If it helps to decrease the wait times for transfers, then the commissioners can discuss at that time whether to extend it for another year, end it, or discuss with Reading Emergency Unit whether they would be ready to handle the full load in their geographical area for the next year. As commissioners, you can choose not to adopt either, either one or both options in the resolution, or let things continue as they are, or you can choose to adopt a different option. I'm open to any ideas, but I do believe working together, we can significantly improve the wait times for our citizens who need to be moved from Hillsdale Hospital to other facilities. Now, I mentioned during the negotiations on the contract with the ambulance folks, look, when I presented this $100 option two to them, I said, "Look, if you want to sit down with a hospital and discuss this and figure out some other way of, that we can improve the wait times that people are facing, I'm fine with that. I don't have any problem with it whatsoever." To my knowledge, that hasn't happened this, this fall. However, Mark indicated to me that in exchange of emails, that Reading is willing to sit down with a hospital and apparently the hospital's willing to sit down with Reading to discuss this, and they're really the people that should be handling this, okay? I'm not an expert in hos, in ambulance services, neither is anybody else in this board. So, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions of what I've said here from you commissioners, but I think it would be wise that I would withdraw resolution 19-153 based upon the fact that the two parties are now willing to sit down and discuss things with one another. So if you want, if you have questions, I'd like to answer them. If not, I would move to withdraw resolution 19-153 at this time based on the fact that they're now willing to sit down and talk to one another.
I support that. Discussion on the withdrawal, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? 153 is withdrawn.
Okay, now, Mr. Chairman, I have, as you requested, I have a, it's now a resolution, it's a, what would we call it?
Motion?
Motion. Do you want me to do that now, as long as everybody's here, like you can all hear it?
By all means, proceed.
Okay. Here's the resolution that I'm proposing. I move, I move to withhold $60,000, and the reason it's 60 instead of 80 is because I feel that Reading and Hospital have, in good faith, agreed to sit down, and I think we in good faith have to lessen the amount of this impact because it's gonna take them some time to get things worked out for transfers to try to improve the situation. So I'm moving it to 60,000. I move to withhold 60,000 from the requested allocation of millage dollars for Reading Emergency Services. Reading Emergency Services and Hillsdale Hospital are to immediately sit down to come up with a solution to greatly improve the wait times for transfers out of Hillsdale Hospital. The two parties will have until April 1, 2020, to present a solution to the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners. The solution shall include measurable outcomes so its success may be known by county commissioners. If such a solution is presented, then the 60,000 will be used to implement the solution. If all or some of the 60,000 is not needed to implement the solution, then the remaining money will be allocated to Reading Emergency Services after a vote of the County Board of Commissioners. If no solution is presented to the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners by April 1, 2020 from the above-named parties, then the County of Hillsdale will hire a mediator for the two parties, Reading Emergency Services and Hillsdale Hospital. The mediator will report back to the County Board of Commissioners no later than June 1, 2020, with his or her solution to reduce transfer wait times. The solution shall include measurable outcomes so its success may be known by the county commissioners. The $60,000 will then be used to implement the mediator's solution. If all or some of the 60,000 is not needed to implement the solution, then the remaining money will be allocated to Reading Emergency Services after a vote of the County Board of Commissioners. And I move for the adoption of this proposal.
Are we, are we allowed to be heard on these, on these things? Are we allowed to ask questions, or it's just the commissioners?
The commissioner's in a meeting now.
Okay. So we're not going to be allowed to be heard on any of these new proposals?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Not during the meeting.
This is a new proposal, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I support it, so there's discussion.
I have, I have discussion. In the second paragraph, in the next, in the last sentence, it says, "If all or some of the $60,000 is not needed to implement the solution, then the remaining money will be allocated to Reading Emergency Services after a vote of the County Board of Commissioners." Okay, to me, that is not right because it says, "The remaining money will be allocated to Reading Emergency Services." Okay, I get that. But then it says, "After a vote of the County Board of Commissioners." Well, what if the County Board of Commissioners voted not to give it to Reading Emergency Services? Then you have, it says it will be allocated, but then what if we voted not to? Then what?
If we voted not to give it to, to Reading Emergency Services, then the money would sit there in limbo.
Okay, because it says will be allocated, so to me, that sentence is a little...
Will be allocated after a vote.
The other, the other thing is, can I, am I allowed to make a, on his proposal to handle hospital transfers where he read this statement, can I ask a question about that? Okay. On page two of that proposal, in the first paragraph, very, very top, you say, "I have a private benefactor who is willing to pay out of his or own pocket up to $3,000 to cover the cost of the mediator." I have a problem with that.
Yeah, I certainly oppose that also.
I oppose that because, because once you start getting a private benefactor involved, it, it could be somebody who is not objective or who has a...
They're not gonna be involved in the discussion.
Yeah, but they're paying for the mediator.
We would hire the mediator from out of county.
Yeah, I'm still, I still am opposed.
They want their dads.
Yeah, that's it.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's that.
We don't have to accept the donation if the, if what you prefer.
Once you start, once, once somebody pays for a mediator, that's not kosher, and I'm not for that.
Okay, that's fine.
That's out of there.
Okay.
Now, I have, I have some other stuff that I wanted to talk about, but I don't know if you want me to...
Well, is it, is it to his...
I would like to interject with further discussion on this motion.
Go ahead.
Because I was wrongly denied being able to reinsert my resolution, but now Mr. Kedwell is allowed to present something. I never saw this motion. I never got a copy of it. You know, at least I sent a copy of mine before the meeting, which, like I said, was the original resolution that was supposed to be in the packet. But I'm gonna read from the payment paragraph that is in the ambulance contract that the county approved and signed in November. And this is the contract with the Ambulance Association. It says payment. It's compensation for all services provided by contractor during the term of this agreement. The county shall pay to the contractor from revenue generated by the Hillsdale County ambulance operating and capital equipment villages such amount as is determined by the Hillsdale County Ambulance Association to exhibit fee, which is the proposal resolution. This amount shall be paid for quarterly installment on the following date, January 15th, April 15th, July 15th, and October 15th. The payment schedule should be based on a formula submitted to the county by the Hillsdale County Ambulance Association and approved by the county. Inmates shall be transported from the Hillsdale County jail by contractor when requested for authorized and necessary emergency medical services at no cost to the county if the cost of such transportation is already included within the compensation to be paid to contractor under this agreement. Contractor further understands and agrees that the compensation to be paid to contractor under this agreement includes compensation to contractor for emergency medical services that may be provided to Hillsdale County residents who do not have insurance coverage that would cover all or part of the contractor's services, and therefore contractor agrees not to submit a bill to keep payment directly from any Hillsdale County resident for any portion of the contractor's provision of emergency medical services to Hillsdale County residents who lack such insurance coverage. All the payments, this, we already approved this contract with the Ambulance Association. All the payments for millage dollars are associated with emergency services only by contract. Therefore, this motion needs to be voted down.
Well, what I was gonna bring up was, I have, I had, I had a couple of concern, I have, I've had three concerns with this, okay? The first is that I want to make sure that the, that what the, what the voters voted for is what we're using the money for. And so, Mark had the same concern, and we have copies of the ballot language. And in reading copies of the ballot language, which I also sent to Penny a few days ago, according to this ballot language, this is what the voters voted for. So I don't see why, you know, I'm listening to the public comments and then listening to this, I mean, I have, I have the ballot language right in front of me. This is what the, this is what the voters voted for, okay? Then, I also have a copy of the legal opinion from Cole Stoker, which is right here. And this legal opinion from Cole Stoker said, "It is our opinion that the ambulance service millage funds could be appropriated for not just emergency responses, but also for patient transports, including to pay for transfers from Hillsdale Hospital to other hospitals where their patients need to go for more advanced services. Thus, the County Board of Commissioners, as part of its appropriation process and via contracts, would have the legal right to allow some of this millage money to be used for such transfers. The specific ambulance services that will be reimbursed, the providers that will be contracted with, the amount of funds allowed will need to be included in any appropriation resolution and some secret contracts with the entities providing the services." So, looking at this legal opinion that we have, and looking at the ballot language of what the voters voted for, this is appropriate. This is their, I have no problem with this. What I'm, what I am, my concern, my two concerns, I feel that as the County Board of Commissioners, we have to have safety for our residents, and I've been getting reports of people who have been in the hospital and waiting and waiting, just like Penny said, her brother had a heart attack and had to wait and wait and wait, and I've been hearing this from other people that needed to get taken care of and they weren't getting taken care of and were waiting and waiting and waiting for transfers. What we're, what we're doing right now is not working, and we have to do something different. We have to find a solution in a short amount of period of time, not months and years from now, while more and more people are laying in the hospital waiting to be transferred and they don't know what's going on, okay? We've had all these meetings, you guys have had all these meetings. What we're doing is not working. Now, this proposal is legal according to our legal opinion, and it's what the voters voted for in writing, right here. Now, the only problem that I have with this is that Julie, apparently, now, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, but you're not here today, and this was not in the packet. This got handed to us, we got handed a bunch of stuff when we walked in here this morning. So, all of the stuff that we got handed, you didn't get, right, Julie?
Right.
So, I, I have a problem, you know, as, as commissioners, it's hard to vote on things when you haven't seen it. When we walk in here, we're supposed to be prepared. I spent two hours yesterday on Christmas Day preparing for this meeting and reading everything in the packet and going over it line by line by line, and all the other commissioners did that too, except for maybe Julie who's not here, okay?
I liked it that too.
But you know what I mean? It's, now we're here and you walk in and you get handed a whole bunch of papers and it's like, I haven't read any of this, I, now I'm, thought I was prepared, and now I'm not really prepared. So, it's hard for Julie to vote on something that she hasn't seen or had a chance to be prepared, and I think also, you know, all of us got handed stuff too. So that's where I have a little bit... So that's where I have a little bit of a problem. But as far as this proposal is concerned, it is legal according to our legal opinion, and it is what the, what the voters voted for. I have that right here, right in front of me in writing. So it's fine, all except for the stuff that we took, we took out the part about the mediator and the private benefactor, we took that out. I'm good with all of it, except I'm not good with getting here on any proposal of anything that we're talking about, including myself. I wouldn't walk in here and just hand, you know, start handing a bunch of papers to, to everybody and saying, you know, I want to vote on this right now because we're not prepared, she's not here, she hasn't, hasn't seen it, and we all got handed stuff that we got here. Other than that, I'm good with it. We have, we have to make a change to what we're doing. What we're doing is not working.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
Well, as it relates to what the proposal was put in front of the taxpayers, then they voted, and obviously the contract indicated that the services for transfers would be used for emergent, and clearly understanding that the mileage money was going to be allocated towards only the emergent, and that was signified quite a bit over and over and during all the conversations. And yet we are here today. What I don't understand is, we do have a problem, but we're not coming to any conclusion, that we are trying to now have three entities, even after what's there in front of us as the ballot and the proposal and how they want to move forward. It's all right to bring a motion today, but then here we are standing with the contract waiting to be signed and so forth. The three entities that I am looking at would be, one would be the county commissioners, then would be the mediator, thus something new, which I just heard just a couple of days back, and then obviously the ambulance contract. So here we're trying to, the page that I found a little ironic was when, this, reading emergency services after a vote of the county board of commissioners, so we will have to make a decision. My suggestion is, we're putting in all of that suddenly for the county board of commissioners to decide as to how we move forward, rather than having our public, which needs to be aware of, because they understand it in a different way. They looked at the mileage amount, they read it, it was on the ballot, they went ahead and passed it, thinking that they're going to pass only for emergency services. We're making changes, which is rightfully we're doing. I believe Commissioner Caswell did bring the suggestion to also look at how we're going to handle our, you know, non-emergent transfers. But that wasn't on the ballot. That's not how the taxpayers passed it. So looks like there's a huge communication gap, and I believe this needs to be brought, either again, sit within the entities and discuss if these things can be brought back. Because as far as we are looking at it, we're going to keep changing from the county, from the commissioner's point of view, that this doesn't work for us, and this is what's going to work for us, then we're just always going to have this fight. And we're not coming to any conclusion, are we? And obviously Commissioner Games is not here. The point that Commissioner Bruce Caswell brought as to putting in the $60,000, requesting to, to hold that back for the need of using it for the non-emergent purposes, because I see there are patients wanting that care, and they need to be transferred in a timely way too. Now, we're not talking, okay, brain bleeds and all of that, that is considered emergency. So that should be covered with the other allocated money that was passed in the ballot. Now what do we do with the non-emergency? So I guess that needs to be again put forth in front of our taxpayers on a ballot again.
But this is, but this is, this is the ballot language, and this is what everybody voted...
Everybody voted for the emergent only.
It's not, that doesn't, no.
Ambulance service.
Ambulance, that doesn't say...
Doesn't say emergent anywhere.
Nowhere in the ballot language does it say that.
So then we're missing transparency.
I've read it, I've read it over and over and over.
That's a yes number.
So the contract indicates no transparency, if I may, then that needs to be clarified again, because now we have the attorney...
This is what the, this is what the voters voted for.
The contracts do not specify that they have to take transfers, but the contract talks about the fact that they, they have to provide ambulance services.
That's it. No emergency, non-emergent, nothing's being talked about. So there you go. There's a transparency issue that's...
Later on, when Julie talked about the JL and emergency services...
Right.
And the fact that the voters of the, the voters that voted for this will only not be sent a bill if they got, if they had an emergency that they had to be picked up.
That's right.
So in other words, if Bruce Caswell's sitting there and I call the ambulance and I want to get transported to a dialysis and they come and transport, they'll charge me for that.
Right.
Because that's not an emergency.
And they didn't know about it.
Okay, but that's the part that's in the funding portion of this whole thing, the emergency part. But when it talks at the beginning of the contract about what the ambulance services have to provide, it's ambulance services. And this legal opinion, as Ruth pointed out, talks about the fact that these definitions, and they cited an MCL thing there. Expression include patient transportation and patient transport, okay? Whether the transport is an emergency transport or a non-emergency transport. Both types of transfers, transports would therefore be considered ambulance services. So what was on the ballot was to provide for ambulance services.
So just for the sake of people who are listening or watching on YouTube, this is the ballot language right here. "Ambulance Services Mileage Proposal for the sole purpose of providing continued funding for ambulance services within the county of Hillsdale, approved by the voters in 2012 and which will expire with the 2018 tax levy. Shall the state of Michigan constitutional limitation upon the total amount of taxes which may be assessed in one year upon all property within the county of Hillsdale be continued?" And then it goes on with the, with the regular ballot language that we have. But it says, "For the sole purpose of providing continued funding for ambulance services." The part about the transfers is in here in the legal opinion, where he says, and where in our legal opinion, it says, "And as our ambulance service mileage funds could be appropriated for not just emergency responses, but also for patient transports, including to pay for transfers to other hospitals where the patients need to go for more advanced services." So this is, this is all good. He's trying to provide, Commissioner Caswell's trying to provide a solution. That's what he's trying to do, because what we're doing right now is not working. And he's trying to provide a solution.
Then we need to work on it.
To get us off of all these meetings and talking and everything else, and months is going by, and all these months are going by, people are laying in the hospital for hours waiting to get transported. We have to have a quick, a quicker solution. Someone could pass away. A loved person could pass away while they're waiting to get transported.
So, Commissioner, just so you understand, there was an agreement, gosh, it's probably been three years ago, something like that, that for, it was three or four very serious issues, okay? I think they call them stat transfers, I'm not familiar with the terminology, but for three or four very serious issues, brain bleeds, severe heart attacks and so on, the hospital for those issues is allowed to call, is, it was agreed that they could call 911 and there would be an ambulance there much quicker because it's on the 911 list as opposed to the transfer list. I don't know how that's worked out, but I think it's been better for those very seriously ill people. Mark, you talked to the hospital more than I have, is that...
It's worked out in probably 90-plus percent of the cases.
So the issue is, you have some people at the hospital who, I think it's fair to say the people that spoke earlier, don't need to be transferred right away. They have a condition that it can wait four, five, six hours. But we still have people at the hospital who do need to be transported much quicker than what they are. And what, all I'm trying to figure out is a way that, do we expand that list? Do we, do we require, I don't want to require the hospitals, because as they pointed out, if they're required to take transfers, then they're not here locally to take care of people that are in an emergency situation, and that's not a good situation. And they're, they have, I think in all fairness to them, they have limitations on what they have, the number of people they have and how many hospitals, or how many ambulances they can staff and so on. So there has to be a solution, and that's why I keep coming back to the fact, they need to sit down with the hospital. If that doesn't work, then there needs to be a mediator come in to try to figure out a way that the people who are not currently on the stat list, okay, but that are also, but that are very, very ill and need to be gotten out of there quicker, how do we, how do we take care of those people? What do we do with that? And I think that needs to be a discussion between the hospital, the ambulance people, and if necessary, a mediator. And I'm thrilled to death that they're willing to sit down with the hospital now, and the purpose of this resolution is to simply say, okay, we're going to keep back 80, we'll keep back 60 right now, because whatever idea you come up with, okay, there's going to be money to fund it. And if, if whatever you come up with doesn't require any funding, then that allocation, whatever's left out of that $60,000 will go to reading.
And I, and I just want to say, in regards with the mediator, I don't think our tax dollars should go for a mediator to come and mediate between the ambulance contract and the commissioners, because we are the ones to put the language for our taxpayers to understand better. So I believe it should come to the county board of commissioners to do. So that's just my opinion, because otherwise we're going to include, include three entities, and mediator will do exactly what we pay him for. But again, the same thing is, we need to just be involved as much as possible, because it's going to be us sitting with the contract. Now, if, if this is what is being proposed as a motion, or however you think the taxpayers would benefit, and we don't have people sitting to wait on emergency basis and sitting too late and waiting in the hospital and not getting proper transfers, then that's a problem. And we need to be transparent to our taxpayers. This is our duty to do it. And I'm only concerned about the fact that all this is coming up now, where I wasn't a part of that meeting, and I really truly wanted to be a part of that. I know I've come, come in late, but the fact is that there were two folks involved, two commissioners involved in this, and at what junction the negotiations have taken place and how much and how far this whole contract is being understood, I think it's going to be a poor representation to our taxpayers, because they will not get a clear picture. And if we can have some language put up there on the ballot, and if our taxpayers are not able to understand it, they're, they're going to think that we don't trust these commissioners, because, you know, it's one thing to put on the ballot, and then if it's not clear, then there's a transparency issue between us and our constituents.
But it is, but it is what they voted for.
Sure, sure, right. And, and we're explaining, we're trying to...
It's not what they voted for. There was never any talk of non-emergency transfers.
That's what I'm saying. There wasn't, I didn't see it myself, so...
But, but that, but, but Julie, but what we're talking about is what, when, when people are saying, this is what we voted for on the ballot, on the ballot language is for the sole purpose of providing continued funding for ambulance services. It doesn't talk, the, the part about...
There's never been any money set aside in this formula ever for non-emergency transfers. This is, we've had an ambulance mileage for 25 years, and there has never been any money set aside for that, because it doesn't apply. It was only for, ever meant for emergency services. That was the intent. Now, I don't know why the word got left off there, but that was the intent. And there was never any talk of that, and as a matter of fact, during the contract negotiations and the presentation of the formula and the mileage distribution, Mr. Caswell was there along with me, and he tried to get language into the contract about transfers, and it was voted down by the ambulance association, because they're non-emergency transfers. So there's no language in the entire ambulance contract that we already approved about any non-emergency transfers. There's no language in there on purpose, because it was voted down by the ambulance association and not accepted into the contract. The intent of the contract and the ballot language, as far as the citizens were concerned and told, is only to provide emergency services with this money.
Well, but what they voted for in the, in the mileage language, in the ballot language which we have right in front of us right here, is, is what we're saying, for the sole purpose of providing continued funding for ambulance services.
Within the county.
Within the county, within the county of Hillsdale. That's correct. And we have a legal opinion that says that we can use it for those transfers, which I already read twice.
Oh, I have a nine-stage legal opinion from the ambulance association attorney, Mr. Blanco, that's there today, that says it's not legal to use the money for that.
Right, but we, we go by our, on whenever there, we have something like this, which we've had a lot of different times, we, we have our Cole Stoker, which is our county attorneys, and that's what we have an opinion from them saying that we can use it. So what Namu said, what I wanted to say to Namu is, the part about that mediator, I think that this is actually a good proposal, because it gives them a chance to sit down first until April 1st to come back to us with a solution, reading emergency services in the hospital. The only way that we would use a mediator is if they don't come back to us with a proposal. If, if no solution is presented by April 1, 2020, then we would have a mediator, okay? The purpose of the mediator is someone who is objective, who isn't, who doesn't have any stake in any of this. It's not us, it's not them, it's, it's an optional third party that has no, their objective. That's what the purpose of the mediator is. But I would hope that by April 1st, that these parties would be able to sit down and come up with a solution and come to us with a solution that works. That's what they should do.
So, why would you hope that? Why do you hope that? They're ready now. Why are you hoping for that? They're ready now.
And it's not transfers within the county. They're outside transfers.
Excuse me, please. We're trying to discuss this, so... Part of the reason this motion was put together was based on some of the conversation that not only did I have with Terry Estrine, but Mr. Slifka, in regards to potentially using a mediator, which is a neutral third party that has no axe to grind, that, you know, we can bring from out of county, that has no personal gain, and they would be more objective, as Ruth indicated. The other thing was, is that in an email with Mr. Slifka, he indicated that he felt he could resolve this between both parties by July of 2020. Well, I'm not comfortable with July of 2020, hence the date of April 1st. This has gone on, by admission of one of our own constituents, that it's gone on for many years, the transfer problem.
Yeah.
So, you know, number one, the job of the commissioners is to watch the county finances. Number two is the safety of its citizens. We would be derelict in our duties if we don't address this problem. The $60,000 is simply a leverage tool, if you will, to make sure that they earnestly get to work. If they get an agreement done by the end of January and they bring it to us, then I'm confident the $60,000 wouldn't, unless there's some of that that's needed, as Bruce has indicated, to facilitate the transfers, then that money would be go back to reading. So it's, it's just a management tool. It's not that we're going to hold the money. We will for now, but, you know, how do you get, how do you force them to get to work? Because it's been, it's been years. It's been years. I have 16 pages of problems from the hospital that was put together. She asked me not to share it at this time. Once that's sat down, that information will be shared. I just received that the other day. But, you know, there's, there's, there's problems with even the stat transfers, as I hear from the audience, because some of them have not gotten out of there as timely as they would have liked. I've got it on a sheet. I see that. But the other, the other issue is, is that some of the non-stat, as they're referring to them, transfers have become stat transfers, because they've laid there too long. And that's got to get addressed. You know, if someone lays there with a potential heart problem and they're not transported in a timely fashion, and then they become a stat transfer, that's, that's what we're trying to address, is how do you address the non-emergency, if you will, or non-stat? And it's been years in the coming or in the making, and so if, if this can get resolved in 30 days, fine. If it can get resolved by April 1st, that's fine too. But the fact of the matter is, is... of the matter is, is the safety of the citizens is, is concerning. And each and every one of you today that are shaking your heads, need to put yourself in that position, that be your loved one laying there for 10 or 12 hours. I, I think I would be appalled, so, but anyways, that's, that's my comments.
So, we have, we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we do.
What do you wanna do?
I think that this is a good, I think that this is a good solution. Because it's really putting, it's really putting this in the hands of Reading Emergency Unit in the Hillsdale Hospital, to get them to a solution, to take care of this problem. And if they don't, then we have a mediator. What, Julie?
It's a one-sided solution, what are, you're using leverage against the ambulance association. It's just, isn't just an ambulance association problem, it's also a hospital management problem, and what are you leveraging against the hospital? What are you withholding from the hospital?
The hospital has no financial gain in this, not one of these dollars ever goes to the hospital.
They won't sign a contract.
No, but it's, but you're withholding money from Reading Emergency Unit that you might pay to other people, which you have no plan on how that will happen.
This current proposal does not propose paying it to anyone else.
Yes, it does.
Where?
Absolutely, it says that it will be paid to other people.
Not the one that Bruce just read, Julie. The motion that he just read, that that money would go back to our EU as soon as a solution is, is just...
It's just to, to force them to come up with a solution.
But why are they being forced to come up with a solution? What are you, what are you doing about the problems of management at the hospital that have also caused this problem?
Well, they're gonna sit down with the table together and talk this over and work it out.
My understanding is, both parties have agreed to sit down.
Well, this is wrong, the proposal is wrong, it should not have. It's not a good solution. We need a solution, but it has to be a two-sided solution, and right now, this is very one-sided, and it's not a good proposal.
We find a way, Mr. Chairman?
And it's been a problem for a long time.
With the hospital...
Wait a minute.
...expected to be solved in five minutes.
What'd you say, Julie? I couldn't hear, sorry.
I said, this has been an ongoing problem for a long time, we have already sat down in meetings, we are continuing to sit down in meetings and discuss how to, you know, solve it, and it's just not something that's gonna get resolved in five minutes.
Yeah, but Julie...
It's going on for years.
I know, but we can't, we can't sit here, you know, this is something, that's a good point that you made. You know, me as a county commissioner, and I'm just gonna speak for myself, okay, I'm not gonna speak for any other commissioners sitting here, they can speak for themselves, but me as a county commissioner, I see this over and over and over, and I've heard this over and over and over on several different issues, where we have sat here, and we have, oh, this has been going on for years, this has been going on for, we can't sit here, that, that's not what we're supposed to be doing as county commissioners. We're not supposed to be sitting here for years and years and years, we are here to solve problems, and to get, make ourselves better. We can't sit here and while, while people are laying in the hospital dying, because they're waiting for a transfer, okay? They have to come and have a solution, we're giving them the authority, they can sit down with the hospital and come up with a solution to this. If they don't, then we need to get a mediator in here, we need to get this problem solved, and we need to move on. We can't sit, what else are we gonna do? We vote this, okay, so, we vote this down, then what are we gonna do? Go for a few more months and years, having meetings, and still more people dying and not getting taken care of, and we're still sitting here?
That's not what's happening.
Well, I've been told by a few different people of my constituents, I've heard several reports of people not getting taken care of in the hospital.
Dying?
Someone did, Penny's brother did, she said.
Where are the numbers?
Where are the numbers? Where's the hospital?
So, what, what are we gonna do? We have to have a solution.
All right, well, but the problem here is, again, on another issue that I wanted to bring, and which was brought, we don't want to use our ambulance services, taxi cab driver, Uber services, we're not, we didn't pay, we did not pass the milage for that either. So if this proposal looks very good, this should have been talked before, or should have been brought forth, and settled down, and opened up the doors of communication with the ambulance contract people, and should have, this shouldn't have come today.
But they have, but, but they have been talking...
Julie doesn't have this motion.
It was brought forth during the contract negotiations with Mr. Caswell present, and it was turned down as not a good solution by the ambulance.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up.
Namu, Namu, they have been talking about this for months and months and months, and we, we're at a point where the county commissioners have got to move this forward, that's just all there is to it. This is a matter of life and death, and we can't sit here and, and just ignore it.
Commissioners, easy, and I know, and you know what, I, I'll just say one thing, that, you know, it's so easy to pass millages upon millages to people, when we don't get the proper language out there, and then when we bring in all these motions, and all, place all this, and this war that's happening in front of YouTube, the whole world's watching us, uh, it's just that we're not able to make any decision today.
When, 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 when Mr. Slifka was, when this ambulance proposal was out there, okay, it was the same summer that the Lifeways Mental Health Milage was out there for the voters, and I was at every single, Dave Slifka went to every single meeting practically in this whole area, talking about his ambulance milage, this ambulance services milage proposal, and I was at practically every single meeting also with Mr. Slifka, because we, we were talking, I was talking about the mental health milage, and we were doing it in the same summer. And whenever we're out there talking about these proposals, I had copies of the proposed ballot language that we gave to all the, everybody that was at every meeting got copies of the proposed ballot language, so that they knew what they were voting on. So, Mr. Slifka did that, I mean, he was there, I was at every single meeting practically, I might have missed one or two out of that whole summer, but everybody had copies of the ballot language before they voted on it. That's what we do, we go to the county clerk's office, and we say we want copies of this, so that we can, everybody will know what they're voting on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Final comment?
Yes.
When, when Julie and I started, now, correct me, Julie, if I'm wrong, but when we started negotiations with the ambulance association over the contract, seeing that it didn't do the money, the ambulance association, if I remember correctly, brought to us the fact that they wanted to deal with just emergency services, and I wasn't comfortable with that, so I added in, and hospital transport. They weren't comfortable with that, and so it ended up being ambulance services, which is what's in there now, it is on the first page of the contract that they need to provide. I think the issue that brought up about, well, what if the hospital doesn't negotiate in good faith, okay, and we go into negotiations, that can happen on either side, I think that's the reason for the second paragraph, if the hospital doesn't negotiate in good faith, then we go to a mediator, and the mediator can sit down with us on both sides, and come up with, hopefully, a solution that we can, that we can live with. So it provides protection if the hospital decides to be obstinate, and not legitimately negotiate with Reading Emergency. It also provides it in the other direction, if Reading Emergency's not, you know, sincere in their negotiations, and the hospital feels they need to move forward, so it lets them both know that, yes, we want you to figure this out, how we can make it better. I think we need to remember that there's good people on both sides of this issue. It is not something that's being done on one side or the other to hurt the citizens of the county. We have limited resources, we have a hospital that is very important to our community, but cannot handle all the various insubstantial specialties that we have today. So we have to recognize that we're gonna get people in, uh, a Manta County employee, whose wife was pregnant, and was told she needed to get to an, an ealdal intensive period.
Right.
We're gonna have situations like that, it's gonna happen. When, when you're in that situation as a resident of the county, the, the money that was allocated for the ambulance services, you'd like to get there as quickly as possible, and we all wanna be there faster than humanly possible, I get that. This is not an issue that's the fault of either side, it's the reality of what we have here in the county, and all, all I'm asking with this is for the people that are involved to know the most about what's involved on both sides of the issue, sit down and come back to us with a legitimate way, not to make it perfect, but to make it better than it is now, and it's something that future boards are gonna have to continue to wrestle with, how do we make it better? Because it's, it's a tough situation.
Yes, I agree.
And the other reason for the milage was so that the ambulance services could pay their people more, and hire more people, so they could service more ambulances, and so on, and, and they're losing people, much like 911 did, to other ambulance services that get paid more. It's hard to find help now, and I think we need to legitimately recognize that on the part of the ambulance services.
I agree.
But again, I would say, there's no bad people on either side of this situation.
And nobody's arguing that, you're right, it's a good point you're bringing in, the motion really represents what really needs to have happened, or talked, or however else the decision should have been made before it went to the ballot, uh, but my only concern here is, if we were to bring in any change to the allocated monies today, I think it would alter the language, what is on the ballot, or was on the ballot, to the taxpayers. That's my thought.
Where, you show...
That's just my thought, forgive me, but that's what I'm thinking.
There's...
That's exactly what I was...
The only thing...
Shh.
...that the public...
I'm sorry, not able to hear anything.
The only thing the ballot said was for ambulance services, continued funding for ambulance services.
Within the county of Hillsdale.
Within the county.
Within the county of Hillsdale.
And this, we got from our attorney, indicated that ambulance services include emergency as well as non-emergency. That's what our attorney said.
And I like the fact that if we can even sit and come to some consensus, open up the door to communication, so we could just put it back to our taxpayer, because now, the entire county couldn't be here today, but I'm pretty sure they'll understand the gist of it, as to what we're trying to put in front of them, that's just my thought. But the thing is, I hate to pass something and then alter it later, when the entire taxpayer has already voted on, that, that makes me look bad, I mean, you know, that's just what I'm saying. It's a great point you're bringing in, if we can work that together, if we can work with them, that's fine.
I call the question.
Ruth has called the question. Yes.
Is that a roll call?
Yes.
On whether to call the question or not, first.
Well, we're gonna vote on the call.
Then we vote on the motion.
That doesn't have to be a roll call.
When you, when you call the question, first you have to vote on whether to call the question or not.
Right, that's a point of order, I understand. So all those in favor of, um, now you understand calling the question, we have to take a vote. So all those in favor of taking a vote, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So it passes. I didn't hear any ayes. Roll, roll, call on Bruce's motion.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carlin?
Abstain.
No, you can't abstain. You can't abstain.
Yes or no?
No.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
No.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Passes three to two.
Now, with that motion, Mr. Chairman, I would also respectfully move to withdraw Resolution 19156. Okay? Which is the allocation of monies, because the numbers that are in there now are wrong, or do you want to just amend it?
No.
As we have it in front of us?
We have, we've amended it, and we have it in front of us, if you want to. Or, what, what does Jody, what do you suggest, Jody?
I am gonna suggest, given the situation and the circumstances, that it should be withdrawn, and a brand new one presented that's clean.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Would you like to withdraw 19156, Mr. Chairman?
Do we need a motion for that?
He made the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You just need to support it.
Support.
Okay, motion's been made to withdraw 156, and bring it back to us as a cleaned-up version. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, um, I guess, continue with the rest of your list there, Bruce.
Okay, I'll go back up, commissioners, to the top of the list, the stuff they've got there, 19148, to the annual board of commissioners, we recommend the transfer of $227,000 from the 2016 delinquent tax revolving fund, because the delinquent tax fund notes have been retired. We would only recommend the transfer of $402,130 of accumulated funds in various delinquent tax revolving funds to the general fund. These transfers fulfill the total 2019 budgeted appropriations from the various delinquent tax revolving funds to the general fund. Do you want me to read the list of...
No, you don't have to. Support.
Total due to the general fund is $629,130, respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported, um, any discussion? Yeah, you did, and then I moved it over, onto my sheet that I had her on, so yes, I, I got your note.
Okay.
Any discussion on 148? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Carlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
148 passes, thank you, please continue.
19149, to the annual board of commissioners, resolution providing for the deposit and investment of county funds for 2020. Whereas under the laws of the state of Michigan, this board is required to provide a resolution for the deposit of all public monies, including tax monies belonging to or held for the state, county, or other particular units coming into the hands of the county treasurer, or in one or more banks within Hillsdale County, which are legal depositories as defined by the state and or federal law. Therefore, be it resolved, the finance committee recommends the following banks of Hillsdale County be designated as depositories for public funds for 2020. Fifth River Bank in Hillsdale, County National Bank in Hillsdale, Jonesville, Litchfield, and Somerset, Century Bank and Trust in Reading, Southern Michigan Bank and Trust, Hillsdale and Camden, Flagstar Bank in Hillsdale, Chemical Bank in Hillsdale. Be it further resolved, the finance committee recommends and directs that Stephanie Kaiser, Hillsdale County Treasurer, deposit for the year 2020, all public monies coming into the hands of one, into one of several of the named banks. In addition, be it therefore further resolved, the finance committee recommends the county treasurer or her designated chief deputy, Tamara Lang, with the advice of the finance committee of the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners, be and hereby authorized to invest these public monies for the good of Hillsdale County in the named institutions or any institution legally permitted by state or federal statute or regulation within the limits set by law. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
I support.
Any discussion or comments on 149? Stephanie? Just, just a minute, Julie, I'll get to you, go ahead, Steph.
I had added Tamara Lang's name, because in my absence, she can do what I can do, and I was absent, she had difficulty at one of the banks getting information that she needed for a loan that came through when I was gone, so that's why her name's on there in the past, has not been on there, but I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Julie?
Well, my comment was gonna be that the duty goes with the, the office or the title, and that we shouldn't have names on there, in case something were to happen to the person, or someone was to leave the position, then we would have to make a new resolution.
So in other words, just take out Tamara Lang and leave in designated chief deputy, so that whoever the designated chief deputy is, would be the person to do it, but you're saying, take out Tamara's name, so if it's not Tamara anymore, that it's on there as well?
And the same thing with Stephanie, I don't think there should be names in the resolution at all.
It's a protection when you go to the institution.
If you go to the position or the title, that person...
Julie, Stephanie says that that's a protection, uh, element, as far as when they take this, uh, I presume, a copy of the resolution to the institution.
To open a new account, I need a resolution with my name on it.
The banks, the banks are requiring her something with a physical name.
Okay.
That was a good point, though, Julie, but I think you should leave it in there.
Yeah, it is a good point, um, this is done, I believe, every year, so, assuming nothing happened during the calendar year, it could be redone at, you know, start of the new year, so, okay.
Well, if the person changes... Well, if the person changes, it'll have to be redone.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. If London says how it has to be, I get it. But.
Yeah.
Yeah, Stephanie would probably, I mean, come to us right away on that.
I went on Monday to a bank and I had a person do CDs normally and she had to have something to say that I invested stock that I was giving her.
That's.
I don't know if you heard that, Julie.
Good point.
Yeah, she did.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other comments on 149? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell.
Yes.
Commissioner Carlin.
And yes.
Okay, please continue.
Resolution 19-150 to the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend the approval of the following 10 attached budgets for the 2019 fiscal year. 201.00 World Commission Fund, 211.05 Family Treatment State Grant, 216.00 District Court Challenge Grant, 222.00 Mental Health Fund, 245.02 County Office Building Improvement Fund, 260.00 Indigent Defense Fund, 274.00 Sheriff's Grant Fund, 297.00 Veteran Service Grant Fund, 402.00 Phone System Fund, 516.18 2018 Delinquent Tax Revolving Funds. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
I support that.
Any discussion on 150?
Commissioners, just so you know, following that resolution, all the different funds we talked about showing revenue coming in and going out.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Gaines.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell.
Yes.
Commissioner Carlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
150 passes. Please continue.
Okay, Resolution 19-151, amending revenue and expenditure for the general fund. To the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend amending the expenditure side of the 2019 general fund budget by decreasing the following budgets.
You don't have to read all this.
Okay, public defenders down 70,000, medical marijuana grant down 17,266, employer retirement down 19,980, employer FICA Medicare down 18,826, contractual services down 39,000, special services down 45,261. So the expenditures are down 210,333 total. We recommend amending the expenditure side of the 2019 general fund budget by increasing the following expenditures. Now, I won't go through all of this. I'll give you the total, which is 478,074. The workers' compensation, which is the deputy that we're dealing with, increase the expenditures by 110,000. Okay? Then there were a series of other things. The other bigger one in here is the Indigent Defense Fund for 116,000. And quite frankly, I don't know what that is. Derek, Derek, come on up. I didn't know you were here. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So when we put together the original Indigent Defense budget, we had certain aspects being paid for out of the general fund. So the public defenders were all being paid for out of the general fund. You see in the very first line, we're reducing the public defender's budget by 70 grand. That's because we paid for those contracts out of the Indigent Defense Fund. And the way the county's going to pick up their portion of it is by allocating money to the Indigent Defense Fund. So instead of paying for the public defenders, instead of paying for the sheriff's deputy that was being funded by the Indigent Defense Fund out of the general fund where we budgeted those items, they get paid for per the state's direction out of the Indigent, out of the Indigent Defense Fund. So we no longer need that budget in the general fund, but we do need an allocation budget to transfer the money to that fund. So it's really a reduction in those other line items and put it into this transferred line item. Now, you won't see that necessarily dollar for dollar because the jail budget was so far over budget with the meals and the health services that we're not actually reducing their budget by, by the amount of their deputy. So you only see the 70 grand decrease. But, you know, that's kind of how it works. I hope that makes sense.
The magic of numbers.
You're right.
So I move for the adoption of this resolution.
I support that.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. There's one more thing. Additionally, we recommend amending the revenue side of the 2018 general fund budget by increasing the following revenue accounts. Surveying Remind Imputation, 14,150 increase. This is revenue. Register of Deeds Recording Fees, up $22,000. And Interest on Investments is up $45,000 from what we had figured. So that's 81,150. So if you look at all the stuff that Derek has done here, basically, we're seeing approximately a $300,000 total, either more money or less spending. And we're seeing 478,000 total more spending. So we're about 170, 180,000 dollars on the bad side of things. Okay? Spending more than what we're increasing. And that 180,000, again, 110 of that is due to the deputy, which we knew was going to happen.
Right.
When you see the budget, the audit, excuse me, next spring, you're going to see without a doubt a deficit.
Sure.
And this kind of.
Because of the workman's comp.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine. That's.
Derek, two things. One, that very last sentence says 2018 general fund instead of 2019.
Oh, okay.
And then the other thing is, I wanted to point out that the reason there's so many department overages is, has a lot to do with the FICA Medicare retirement that we set aside. So a lot of these departments were fully staffed all year, which we planned on and we set aside money from. And in that first section, you see that we're taking that 19,980 and that 18,826. That covers a pretty, that covers all of the FICA Medicare retirement overages. Just FYI.
Do you remember doing that? You weren't there. Let me explain. When a department has an employee that leaves, there may be a period of time when that employee, before that position gets filled. During that period of time, any money that was allocated to that budget for FICA, Social Security, Medicare, all of that money belongs to that budget. So the elected official in that budget can spend that money any way they see fit. Okay? And we don't have anything to say about it. So what we did last year is we looked at each department and how many people they had that were, how much vacancy they had in their department during the course of the year. And we removed FICA, Social Security, that kind of stuff from that budget with a promise to them that if they remained fully staffed for the whole year, we'd transfer that money back so that they would be covered. They weren't going to have to pick it up for the rest of their budget. Well, some of the departments did remain fully staffed. They needed more money because we cut on some. So this is transferring it back over so that they're full of hell of a harmless.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
If, if we don't, if we did this and we had somebody that was understaffed all year long, then that money's over here. It belongs to us and we can allocate it as we see fit. If it remains in their budget, they can spend it any way they want to.
That's right.
That's just the way it works in the county.
Sure. Yeah. Sure. Thanks. Just one simple question. Was it when you amended the revenue side, which is 2018 or 2019?
It should be 19.
2019, right. Thank you.
I'll make the correction on that. So it will be 2019.
Did you need a motion to amend it? Okay.
It's to clarify.
Just a clerical. Okay. Thanks, Derek and Julie.
One more, just because it's kind of big, the probate court amendment. They had two employees leave and they got substantial sick and vacation payouts. We don't really budget for those. So when they happen, they're always a little bit of a hit to a budget. And then another thing is the health insurance, a $19,000 hit. Our health reimbursement ended up being about 19 grand higher than we budgeted. That's the variable piece of our health insurance that we do our best to estimate, but it really is based on usage throughout the year. I will add that we had, it's about 50/50 on the number of employees who stayed in that HRA plan and moved to the HSA. So it'll be interesting to see how that, how that shapes up for 2020, having half the people in the HRA. But again, it's, it's kind of an unknown. We just try to, you know, do our best guess based on the history of that, of that plan. And then you see the jail with, with huge changes. And we've reflected that in our, in the 2020 budget with the help of the sheriff to try to account for their increased meal costs and their increased health services costs. Those are the kind of other big ones I just wanted to touch on real quick.
Thanks.
Okay, any more discussion or questions, comments on 151? Roll call.
Who supported that?
I supported that.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell.
Yes.
Commissioner Carlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines.
Yes.
Resolution 151 passes. Please continue.
Okay, Resolution 19-152 has been withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
And Resolution 19-153 has been withdrawn.
Yes.
Resolution 19-154 to the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend approval of the following wage increase for the positions of building official and deputy building official affecting February 1, 2020 as follows. The building official, current rate is $60,024.29. Maybe get a 2.5% increase to $1,515.61. The new rate would be $62,140.14. The deputy building official, current rate is $56,267.79. Increase of 2.5% would be $1,406.69. New rate would be $57,674.48. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
I support that.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I want you to understand, Julie, you correct me if I'm wrong here, but Marty, Marty is going on to Medicare. I'm on Medicare. And under the Accountable Care Act, I can't get any health insurance through the county and I cannot get paid pill. All the other county officials get that because on Medicare, I can't get pill. Marty has moved on to Medicaid. He's joined the list of old people. Okay? The money that he's saving in his budget, and his budget is not funded through the general fund. His budget is funded by its fees. The money he's saving because of that change, he's proposing to take that money and give half of it to himself in wage increase and the other half to his deputy in a wage increase. So that's where this has come from. The end result is, isn't going to be any different than it is now for his budget, but he has graciously given up half of what he was getting in health insurance to his deputy to help get his wages up. So I think that speaks volumes about Marty and whatever the person he is.
Thanks to Marty. Very nice.
Agreed.
Okay, any further discussion or comment on 154? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Please continue.
And Resolution 19-156 has been withdrawn. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you'd be very glad to know that I'll keep my mouth shut.
It is quarter to 12. So I appreciate that. Ruth, that brings us up to you.
I had pulled 19-147 off the consent agenda.
Yes, you did.
And it says, we recommend that the unfilled custodial position remain vacant until such time it is deemed necessary to fill such position. Okay? And then it goes on. There's another line there, moving from a level three to level four. My, the reason why I asked it for it to be pulled was the first line.
Mm-hmm.
We recommend that the unfilled custodial position remain vacant. I guess I need clarification on that.
Well, part of that was a compromise with the union.
Okay.
They want, they didn't want that position. Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but LeAnn's position was she didn't want that to go away.
Right. So we can't just eliminate by contract positions. So we agreed that we would raise the other people's wages, okay, and leave that position open. It's vacant. We're not removing it. That's what they asked.
So, so.
So we have to pass, so we have to pass this resolution the way it's written because of the union?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, may I? Yes, this goes to the heart of Ronald Reagan's comment. The closest thing to eternal life on earth is a government program.
I just think that, that the, I find to pass it the way it's written. But I just, personally, I'm just speaking for myself, Ruth as a commissioner. Okay, I'm not speaking for any other commissioners. But me, Ruth, as a commissioner, I think that that custodial position needs to be filled because of what LeAnn came up here and said to us. And then I went and I talked to LeAnn after, later on, after we weren't, we were out of the meeting, I went up to her office and talked to her. And in thinking about this and in talking to her, and I talked to a couple of other county employees too, I think that that custodial position needs to be, needs to be filled. But that's, I guess that's another matter. If we have to pass this the way it's written, then.
Ruth, if we pass it the way it's written, then we can fill it at any time.
Okay, okay.
Randy can approach us, you know, and fill it at any time. We can vote to fill it at any time. That's why it's written that way.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I guess just for everybody's memory, remember this was around and around to keep the maintenance guy, to let the, you know, janitor position stay vacant. It was a neutral budget thing.
Yes.
If, if it was all encompassed.
Right. And we also, let me discuss that. It was going to save us some money. But in down the line, I now understand Commissioner Brown mentioning that we would need that fourth person. But that down the line, if we do see it. But in other ways, I think the level three to level four, the increase for the wage, we can just do with the short staff that we already have rather than recruiting another one, which would cost us more money.
What I, what I talked to LeAnn about was, I was thinking about privatizing our custodial staff because Randy had indicated that he was having trouble retaining employees. And the city of Hillsdale has, has a service that they're using. And I wondered if we couldn't go in that same direction that the city is, is using.
It would be.
And so I went to talk to LeAnn about that. And LeAnn told me that, and I didn't know this myself, maybe everybody else knows it, but I didn't know it. She said that the union rules are that in order for us to privatize it, you, you have to wait for a whole year.
Right.
So I didn't know that. That was news to me. But anyway, yeah.
We're bound to that contract. Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Plus, you'd still have to fight the union. So.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion on 147?
Who supported that?
Did you pull it?
Yeah, you pulled it.
She drew it.
I'll support it.
I'll support it just so we can.
Thank you.
Okay. Once again, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of 147, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? 147 passes. Please continue, Ruth.
I'm going to, I had, I had prepared a 48-minute report.
It's okay.
I'll let you deal with my daughter then.
But under the circumstances, in the spirit of the season.
Thank you.
And in cooperation with my fellow commissioners, I will defer and just let that all ride until 2020. And so I will actually conclude my report.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That gives me more time, right?
There you go.
Yeah, there you go.
That brings us up to you.
Okay. Thank you for that gift, Commissioner Brown. All right. I've been busy last entire couple of weeks and so have the committees.
Just to our action items, you have to go, you have to go at 12, don't you?
Yeah.
I'll get that very long.
Action items.
Okay. Okay. Just really quick then, just to make it really quick, so have my committees, they've been busy, the townships as well. Last time I'd come here with the county medical examiner reports and I did send you copies of the case expense and, which is about 19 pages there. And then also the definition of what the MOM was, the, it's called the month of, the morgue of the month. That's what they call. And I met with Dr. Bader and their committee when I'd been to their meeting on December 5th and compiled it for you guys. And so you see what their explanation is of what each month and which funeral homes are designated to do the jobs. And as last time I mentioned, August 1, 2020, the medical examiner investigation will keep their office where it is in Springbrook Avenue, which is in Adrian. But the transition of the morgue. the morgue to Elm Road Jackson will successfully take place, again, I repeat, August 1, 2020. And the questions that some of you had asked, if that would incur any further costs, that would, at the moment, the only cost I think would be in regards with the funeral homes if they decide to do any changes. So that is just that. And with that, I do have a resolution to 191, 19-155. To the Honorable Board of Commissioners, whereas the Hillsdale County Sheriff's Office has downed one patrol vehicle due to an accident that has totaled the vehicle and whereas the Hillsdale County insurance provider has issued a check of $16,000 to Hillsdale County for the value of the vehicle and whereas that check was received into a Hillsdale County general fund account, now therefore be it resolved, Hillsdale County enters into a lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for a new sheriff patrol vehicle not to exceed 2020 costs and lease payments and proper equipping of the vehicle of $16,000. Respectfully submitted, Namrata Carlin, Chair Public Safety Judiciary.
Support.
Moved and supported. I know we discussed this at the last meeting and I know the sheriff and Derek have gotten together and I believe the wheels are turning on getting that car. Derek?
Yeah, wants this to be approved.
Okay, thank you for that.
That's right, and just a really quick point on that, I did talk to the sheriff department, I did talk to sheriff as to how the $16,000 was going to be utilized and the customization of the vehicle and everything. If he leases it, that would cost about $10,500 and the rest of the amount would be just within the $16,000 parameters for the customizing of the vehicle and everything. So we're not going to exceed that dollar amount.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? All those in favor of 155, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passes 5-0. Please continue.
Right, and so, moving forward, the, usually I would be attending the ETSB meeting, the Hillsdale County Emergency Telephone Services Board meeting, that was canceled, but the next scheduled date, if any one of you want to attend it, is January 15, 2020. And the Fire Chief Association meeting, that was postponed for January 21, 2020, and it will be at the Hillsdale Township Fire Department at West Beacon Road at 7:00 PM for those who want to attend it. I did have a very nice tour of the 911 Central Dispatch on December 10 with the Honorable Director Doug Samford, and he shared a lot of information, couple of things that I wanted to quickly show you. He did give me a couple of brochures that a lot of folks can find it online as well at the Family Preparedness Guide and SMART 911, a couple of items that are so useful for our folks in everyday use and especially with the, if you were to register on the www.co.hillsdale.michigan.us, you can get yourself registered to stay informed and this is what it looks like, really very informative things and these things that you could just go through the brochure and be a part of what's going on and be safe on, especially on our weather-related issues on the road. He, we did discuss a couple of few things. He talked about how many were dispatched, for eight law enforcement agency, 14 county fire departments plus three from outside the county and five emergency medical services agencies. Several fire departments also have been a part of the medical first responders and those are covered in the website I just gave you. I just want to cover really quickly, in 2018 dispatchers handled about 52,226 incoming calls. Of these, 27,588 were 911 calls. Talk about what the voters passed, the voters have authorized surcharge $3 per month per device, same wording as a state enabling legislation, and it currently stands at $2.50 where it has been since 2016. So the total number of devices continues to decline, which means 911 income also declines, that was the conversation we had. Another thing, just to bring to the table, approximately 75% of the 911 calls come from cellular telephones. Cell phones are basically handheld radios. When their calls first come in, dispatchers do not know where they're located unless callers tell them. So if they're going online enough with a strong enough signal, the cell company will give them a latitude and a longitude location which maps them on their computers. Some companies are more accurate on others, just FYI to you. Under state law, the funds received from the telephone surcharge can only be used for the personnel and equipment needed to provide the delivery of 911 services to the citizens of the areas where funds are collected. And last but not the least, in regards with the ETSB and the 911, the 2020 budget anticipates $1,236,750 in both income and expense, just again FYI. And Hillsdale County is one of many in the state of Michigan around the United States that participates in that SMART 911 program I just talked about, and that's the brochure and I gave you the website and I'll repeat it one more time, is co hillsdale.m i.us. You can register to stay informed. Really fantastic website for moms, young kids, teenagers and folks who are on the go. I did visit Wright Township on December 12. They have also addressed a similar resolution as it relates to the poverty guidelines for 2020, which was similar to the Pittsburgh Township. So they have entered that or had a resolution and been addressed to the taxpayers. And then they have a new clerk there, her name is Megan Zimmerman, the former clerk resigned due to ailing health issues after the demise of her husband. And the new clerk has fully commenced after her orientation and training, so fully, really good group of folks there at this township that I proudly serve. I also attended the Somerset Township on December 19 and they supposedly, they were going to have a special meeting at 6:00 PM, but that was canceled. It was a presentation potentially from a company called Green District Plaza. It's a medical marijuana-based company to potentially buy empty lots and building across the township which is adjacent to the postal offices of Somerset and right across the county national bank. And the township has been threatened by this company to either go into a lawsuit with them for not paying for the sewer system of the building lots or let them have the building basically to open up the medical marijuana place as settlement for the lawsuit. And the township is referring this litigation matter to the appropriate legal firm. So that's from their end. And then I, just the other day, December 19, a lot of things were accomplished. I did attend the DHHS meeting and the Hillsdale County Medical Care Facility along with Mr. Chairman, it was his kind guest, I really appreciate, so a lot of learning. Like I say, I'm learning and I'm on a pilgrimage. It was a really nice group, a great tour of the entire facility, and I'd like to say that the Hillsdale County Medical Care Facility, and I brag about it to all the townships that I serve proudly, that you are our gem to the county. And so I refer to all the elderly folks, if anybody's looking for a place, that would be. And this is the last report I want to give you is I had a, I would like to say I had a really good Christmas because a gift for me was, I said I wasn't going to have a good and a great family time unless and until I visit this one family. And this family was the sheriff department very own Wes Ludiker. I decided to pay my visits along with Patrick, my husband, we visited Wes and his wife Heidi. It was a beautiful visit on, they live by the Hillsdale, one of those main road, Hudson Road, and it was very refreshing because he opened the door and it was really refreshing to meet with him. He's going to have a very long journey in recuperation, but I think it was really nice to see him doing well and I felt very encouraged that his program that he has been involved with has been doing well for him and it gave everybody's regards here from the Board of Commissioners and it was a really fantastic visit of hour and a half with this family, so I decided to spend some time with them. So with that, I conclude my report. Unless and until the sheriff department, Sheriff Parker, has anything to say.
No.
Okay, and I do not have any reports from the jail or anything from sheriff because they are not being completed until the whole month is done, so November report was given to you last month. So that concludes.
Okay, thank you. Julie?
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and defer my report till January and let you go ahead and get your resolutions.
Okay, thank you. You, you did, I guess just so the rest of the commissioners know, you visited with the, the department heads that, as far as the job descriptions?
Yes.
So...
The job descriptions are up to date. Everybody's, you know, performing their duties as specified and really there were some minor things on there, but nothing major to report.
Okay, we can, yeah, we can talk about that some more at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, real good, thank you. Unless someone's got a question for Julie at this time? Okay, so that brings us up to 157, resolution 19... Thank you, Goody. You printed off everything but that one. "We recommend the chairperson of the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners be authorized to sign one-year probate court legal services contract between the county of Hillsdale and Lovettshire and Thompson, PC for the sum not to exceed as follows, $10,500 per year, that's $875 per month, January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020. Respectfully submitted, Mark Wiley."
I support that.
Thank you. I may comment that this is identical to the one that we had for this year as far as the dollars, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question.
Yep.
Is this monies that are going to be allocated on a yearly basis or just monthly? Are we going to go $875 per month or we're just going to pay them one year?
It's paid monthly, but it's in the budget as an annual amount.
Okay, got it.
Yep. Any further questions on 157? Hearing none. All those in favor of 157? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, with one out of the room.
Got it.
Thank you. Let's see, 150, my apologies, I would like to withdraw 158. Reason being, there is no increase as was indicated in the packet. I have spoke to, excuse me, Judge Bianchi, and she's going to make some changes within that contract. She has contacted that attorney and he will continue to work for the same amount as 19, so that'll, that'll come back before us after she makes the changes she wants to be made in the contract.
Which is 2020. She's, do you know what month is she going to?
Hopefully it'll be back before us in January.
Okay, so no increase?
No.
Well, that's a relief.
Yeah, it'll be the same as what was budgeted.
Okay.
Part of the problem is he put in his request too late.
Okay.
And just so you know, one of the changes she wanted to put in the contract, which she's going to start to put in all of her contracts, is, is that she wants to see evidence of continuing education.
Sure.
So, and there was a few other changes, so we'll have that in front of us sometime in January. So, probably need a motion to pull that or...
You just withdrew it, that's fine.
You just withdrew it.
That works for me, thank you. Got to have Goody to keep me straight. 159, "We recommend approval of a settlement agreement between the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners, the Hillsdale County Sheriff and the Police Officers' Labor Union." Hillsdale County, what was that?
She supported it.
Oh, okay, I'll stop reading then. Now, I'll finish, but we've got our support. Agreed to on December 13 and ratified by the union on December 13. Further, we authorize the chair and the chair of Public Safety and Judiciary Committee to sign the agreement on the behalf of Hillsdale County, which commences January 1, 2020 through March 31 of 2021. So I've already moved for adoption, Julie's supported. I guess I'll add, and if you'd like to add anything else, Julie, but I'll add that this is a, basically a 15-month contract and that gives us time to work on the wage issue, gives us time to work on the, the actuarial study on the retirement, of which we've got Watkins Ross coming on the 14th of January and Merus coming on the 28th. And Bruce and I have a meeting on the 30th with Watkins Ross, correct? Okay, so, anything you wanted to add on that, Julie?
No, that sounds right.
Okay.
So the 3% is from the start date out 15 months, so it's really like 2.4% per year?
Yes.
Okay, because it goes a little extra.
More of us.
Right.
Yep. It's 3%, well, that's not really true, it's 3% on schedule, so it would actually bump their entire schedule up, so.
Right, they all go up 3%, but it's good for you in quarters, so what that really marks on a yearly basis...
Right.
Is 2.4%.
I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying. The math, the math wizard, excuse me. Any further discussion on 159? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Four and one apps. All right, and we have 160, I believe?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. "We recommend approval of a settlement agreement, which is attached, between the Hillsdale County Board of Commissioners, the Hillsdale County Sheriff, the Police Officers' Labor Council, the Hillsdale County Sheriff's Supervisory, this is the Supervisory Unit, the other one was the deputies, just to be clear. Agreed to on December 13, 2019, ratified by the union on December 13, 2019. Further, we authorize the chair and the chair of Public Safety Judiciary Committee to sign the agreement on behalf of the county of Hillsdale, which commences January 1, 2020 through March 31, 2021. Respectfully submitted."
I support that.
Thank you. And pretty much everything I said holds true to this one because they were identical offers, so.
Mr. Chairman, Derek, Derek, do you know what each one of these costs to the county? Total cost? If you don't, that's all right, I'll find out later.
The annual cost on this, I don't remember the exact number, but Derek had it figured out for me.
I'll find out.
We came right in that, right close to that $60,000 number, I don't remember, it was one side or the other. Yeah, it was real close to that number that you and I talked about earlier in the process. Okay.
And it's the same...
Pardon me? Name who's supported, oh, we've got it.
I supported it.
I'm sorry.
And it's the same thing, Mr. Chairman, as supervisor unit to non-supervisory unit?
Yes.
Well, okay, no change?
Yep, same offer across the board. We were trying to be fair.
Sure, I understand.
Any further questions on 160? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passes four, one apps. All right, let's see. The, oh, I've got a question. I had this land, I have Derek left, I'll check with him later. We've got a, and I know him and I talked about this earlier, and this may just be something that was sitting in the mail, but the VA grant that we had gotten, the one that was almost $50,000 or was $50,000, there was $852.86 that weren't used. We needed to send it back to the state. And last, I knew Derek was working on that, but this is probably just old later, but the VA grant money was one of the things that the governor did sign and put back in, so.
Yeah, to be restored back, right.
So I have told her nay to get busy and reapply.
Right, good.
So.
That's for the help in her office?
Yes.
That's right.
Good.
Yeah, because, well, the one that for her help, I believe was the $10,000 one, the $50,000 was for other, but I told her to reapply for both of them. Yep, yep.
So in regards to the reapplying, because I know it's going to be restored back by the end of the year, did they tell you the timeframe as to when next year, can you start applying?
They haven't said, but I told her to start.
Right away, yeah.
Don't, don't wait.
Don't wait, yeah.
Don't wait, so, okay. Any questions for me? Okay, that brings us back to public comment. Stephanie?
Like I said earlier, I was...
Like I said earlier, I was at the office when the last meeting took place. I just want to, for the record, put my disappointment, and that including other chief deputies and the raise you gave another chief deputy. You talk about fairness, you just said it, Mark, and I don't think that was a fair move to do, by just giving one chief deputy a raise over not giving a raise to others.
Thank you.
John Smith, Somerset Center, again. Just to clarify, just, I think I just witnessed this county commissioner put a resolution in, and from my understanding, the approval of the chair removed that resolution and put in a different resolution for that person? Did I not just witness that today?
I guess I'm not.
Julie had a resolution put in, it was removed, and another resolution was put in that place, but not by her. And I was, it was through Bruce, but Bruce was told to do it by you? Did I not just witness that today?
Not sure, Feller, where you're going, Dan.
Okay, it doesn't matter.
You can talk to me.
You don't have to comment about it, it's no big deal, I guess. But I'm sure it's a big deal to Julie's constituents. Where does general welfare end and begin when it comes to government? And that's, I see this quite a bit, because national government, it seems like it's endless, and at the local government level, since they're doing it endless, it's like we do it almost endlessly as well. I got our new Hillsdale County Republican Party law, which everybody here takes the R to their name when they're running for election here, and it says, it talks about lower taxes, it talks about individual responsibilities. So I, I mean, what I seen today with this ambulance service is I seen government use taxpaying funds to strong arm, to strong arm a private business to make a contract with another private business. And I thought that was kind of concerning. Thank you, Non-Rada, for bringing up public trust and perception, because obviously we seen language on a ballot that doesn't represent the contract. Because on that ballot, I can go get free ambulance service too, because it doesn't talk about getting paid or getting charged for getting ambulance service. So obviously there's some sort of disconnect, and I told, when I, when I came up here for the appointment of this position over here, I talked about the biggest problem that we're going to have is not money, it's about public perception and trust, and that's just getting thinner and thinner. Mark, you made a comment talking about loved ones, like, you know, if I had a loved one that was in a, in a hospital in pain and stuff. Well, I would use my Republican value of my individual responsibility, I would pay for a taxi to have that done, or I'd go get her myself, or I'd pay an Uber or something. I wouldn't expect you to pay for it. I wouldn't take it from you. And all this is all because of conjecture and rumors at this point, because nothing's been presented as fact. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Dan, anyone else?
Orlando, one. I just want to go to specifically Commissioner Brown. On several occasions, read only a portion of the proposed ballot language. I want to read from your, the opinion that your attorney gave in this, in this case, which I have had, as all of you know. And on page two of the opinion, there are a lot of things in here I want to mention, but in the interest of time, on page two, about halfway down, paragraph that starts at set forth above, "The village funds are earmarked and may only be used for the specific purpose of funding a county ambulance services program." Now here's the real important language at the end of that paragraph. "The scope of such ambulance services," the scope refers to what the services are going to be, whether they're going to be emergency medical services, transfers. "The scope of such ambulance services to be paid for with these village funds would need to be designated in a contract." I was personally involved, as you know, in negotiations of the contract. Originally, this is the language that we objected to, that was removed. "Services provided," paragraph one, "at all times during the term of this agreement, contractor shall furnish, perform, provide emergency ambulance service to the resident and other persons within the service area described in paragraph five of this agreement. And," and this is in bold, in my opinion letter on page two, "and shall also provide hospital-to-hospital transfer services from Hillsdale Hospital to other hospitals as required by Hillsdale Hospital." That was removed from the contract. Your own lawyer told you for you to include those transfers within the scope of the services, it has to be in the contract. The transfers were removed from the contract. They're not part of this ambulance service agreement, which by the way, you voted for and agreed to and signed. So it's binding on you. So the notion that this, the ambulance services includes transfer here is not only fault, but it's also contrary to your own attorney's opinion. Secondly, I think you're missing a large part of what the objection is here. Even if we can't agree on what the public was voting for, I don't think there's anybody in this room that would not agree that the public voted to fund ambulance village, actually to be more specific, to continue the ambulance village. And I think Julie Gans made the point I wanted to make earlier, which is, this is a continued funding, never in 25 years or however long you've had this funding has ambulance transfers ever been included. But, but that's not even the point I want to emphasize. You now have taken $60,000 that your community voted them out of their own pocket, and you've taken it out, and clearly for the funding of ambulance service. We can disagree about the scope of that for a moment, for purposes of argument only, but we can't disagree that it's for ambulance service. You've taken that it's designated for the, for the community to receive ambulance services. You now withdrawn $60,000, even if it's for one day, it's illegal, it's unlawful, you can't do that. You don't have that authority. And then, the other thing is, Commissioner Wiley mentions this, all this empirical data. Empirical, what is it? I don't know if this was a misstatement by one of you, but one of you made a statement to the effect that, you know, they were supposed to meet and they haven't met. I thought the meeting stayed in place and continues to take place, and they've had various discussions. And what this gentleman just brought up earlier is exactly what you're doing. Commissioner Caswell said, "We're not, not one penny is going to the hospital." Yes it is! That's exactly what you're doing. You're not paying it to them in a, in a check, but you withdrawing it from the funds that were allotted by your residents, that were voted for your resident, you're taking it from their designated village, and you're withholding it from those services, and then you say, "Well until you guys can get together," and not, July 1st is too late, you got to do it within the first three months, the first 90 days of January, of 2020, you've got to get together and come to some agreement, and you don't find that as unusual, unlawful? You're not using that at leverage against this ambulance company? That's exactly what you're doing. You are favoring a private entity, as I stated earlier in my comments, you couldn't do that to fund their anesthesiology residency program, why do you think that you can do that to fund private ambulance services? The stat ambulance transfers are not an issue, they've not been an issue, we've had a number of meetings with a hospital to that effect, and the proof of that is, you as the body that's voting for this have not cited or even produced one item to support the claims that you're making here. Not one, there isn't, doesn't exist, you just, it's, it's all somebody said innuendo or, there's no, nothing has been produced. I, I'm at a loss, quite frankly, for what you've done. The last thing I guess I, I will say is, I would read your lawyer's opinion, I would urge you to do it again today, and take into consideration what your lawyer's telling you, because it isn't that different, except for one significant respect with what I wrote. On page one, he clearly states, "The law requires when a local unit of government holds a village election, the ballot, quote, 'shall specify the intended purpose of the renewed or new funds.'" This is what Commissioner Carolyn was addressing earlier. There's nothing specific in there that talks about transfers. And he just, your lawyer quoted the law, I didn't tell you that, he did, "shall specify the intended purpose of the renewed or new funds." That comes right out of the statute and right out of the law, right out of the common law. This isn't a vote for new funds, this is renewed funds. Ambulance, ambulance funds and ambulance village that's being renewed, that never included transfers before, that you now want to pretend does. And your own lawyer's telling you that the law requires for the specific purpose to be stated on there, and the scope of sub-services, even if you want to argue, "Well, ambulance services is a general term, that's included." The public knew that's what they were voting for. The public knew that you were going to take the money they voted for, and you were going to fund private ambulance transports from the hospital to, including out of county residents? And I read somewhere recently, I don't know where I read it, but that you actually intend to use those funds to go get people. I read this recently, I'm not sure where, that you're going to go get resident or others that have been transferred from the hospital to come back here. I just, you, you are missing the, the specific instructions of your own council, and in terms of what the law provides. And I just don't know by what authority you're doing. The, the one thing I wanted to correct you on, or excuse me, Commissioner Brown, is, I don't know a whole lot about a lot of things, but I spent 38 years representing ambulance services, counties, fire departments relating to EMS. Nowhere in the EMSA, as I stated earlier, is there a definition of ambulance service. The statutes you referenced are licensing statutes, and that's in your own lawyer's opinion. At the bottom of page two, when he cites the definition of ambulance, and he cites the definition of ambulance operation, he concludes with this sentence, "These definitions expressly include patient transportation and patient transport." He's exactly right. Thus, a license is required for patient transports by ambulances, including between medical facilities. That's the same thing I just got done telling you at the beginning of this. Those provisions relate to licensing. In other words, in Michigan, in other states, by the way, they have isolate companies. An isolate company is a company that puts an isolate, meaning a structure, in the back of a van. York does that, a number, New Jersey does, a number of different states do that. They put people in isolates and they train, you can't do that in Michigan. You have to have an ambulance license to be able to provide that transport. That's what your lawyer's telling you. That doesn't mean that when you went to the public to renew a village for ambulance service that did not include patient transport, that allows you to define the scope of ambulance service within your county to include those transfers. You know, you know that wasn't included, it wasn't included, and even your own lawyer told you for you to include it, you got to include it in the contract. You took it out of the contract, it's not in the contract, and you now want to pretend that it is. That's trouble, very trouble. And I trust all of my comments will be in the minutes.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
I'll be quick. I'm going to speak totally as a citizen of District One. Thank you for pointing out my ignorance on what I voted for on this village. Okay, appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that you've been using the words months and months and months, this has been going on for months and months and months, hasn't even started yet. We proposed an increase in the village to help offset the shortages of the manpower and the ambulance and the unit hours, in turn, to offset the problems we had at Hillsdale Hospital. So the problems with the new village haven't even started yet, but you're sitting there saying it's been going on for months and months and months. You haven't gave the association the opportunity to take the new increase in funds and correct the issue that we are aware that's out there also. Now, I would like you to set us up, in Caswell's own admittance, his ignorance in the ambulance service has kind of proven, you know, maybe you're getting your information wrong. He did the same thing to us on several meetings that we had things agreed to, just like we saw today and witnessed, and all of a sudden he's going to throw his own proposal in there to you guys, and then we got this problem. We have been in good faith in negotiating this for the longest time. I propose that next time, and maybe when you hit Pittsburgh Township, see what their satisfaction is and what they're expecting out of the village. He confuses Jefferson so bad that I have to, you know, we have meetings on our own. Okay? I propose though, that I would like you to set aside, Mr. Caswell, $120,000 and put an ambulance in my driveway, just in case I need it. Okay? It seems that you guys have went from delegation and assignment of cash and money to operations. You are now stepping into the operations portion of telling the ambulance association how they're going to operate with the village money, that your responsibility is solely in the allegation and dispersment of money. That's my opinion. I hope this gets ratified, because I know we have a contract, Hudson does cover, we got to have a contract that expires January 1st. What do you want Hudson to do? What do you want me to tell my people in Pittsburgh and Jefferson who their ambulance service is? Who in the hell's going to be my ambulance service right out there in Hillsdale Township January 1st? Am I going to have an ambulance? I mean, and I don't want to put pressure or threaten anything, because this is not a threat. This is just the fact that I think there's been a huge misunderstanding, that we recognized ourselves there was a problem. It was funding, we thought was the major thing, so if we could get that village back up, give the ambulance services the opportunity to take that additional money, how it's supposed to be sent, and then see what happens with the hospital. And if you want to allocate, please put an ambulance in my driveway and allocate money to have that. I may have a heart attack, or I may need to be transferred, so I guess, do I have an ambulance? Do I get money allocated to me as a private citizen? It's kind of silly. I think we can fix the Hillsdale thing if we stick to the topic what the village was for, and don't tell me what I voted for, all right? And shame on me if I'm not as smart as you are to figure out what that meant, because I voted for it for several years, okay? I expect emergency services, and then by increasing that, increasing the manpower, let them invest their money, the Hillsdale Hospital transfer thing will take care of itself between That's the main problem. And Hudson has a big market in this, because Hudson runs over 200, 300 medical assists in Hillsdale County, all the way to Allen and stuff. That's not benefiting Hudson Township, you know what I mean? We need to work together, get the money in there, let them put the manpower on, and then we can, the Hillsdale Hospital thing will solve its problem. But I think you guys are crossing the line from allegation of money to operations all of a sudden, and it's kind of disappointing. It's kind of disappointing that we're taking public safety again, which shouldn't be a public circus, you know what I mean? It shouldn't be in the public eye, it should be in the background providing care to people that need the care, and it should be handled professionally like that, not in a circus area. And again, I go back, the biggest problem is the changes that you made from agreeing to one minute, and it was proven today how that worked. So I think maybe Mrs. Games should step up for herself a little bit, she was all, all those meetings also, and she knows how everything got manipulated until we got to this point, and now we're a week away from a contract, and all these manipulations are coming to sight, and it's too bad.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time?
I just want to clarify my brother's story. I said that because I don't know if ambulance was pulled away from a non-emergency transfer, my brother had to wait. So I, I think these non-emergency transfers are a problem, and I've seen that on people posting social media things about when they listen to 911. There's a problem, I would think the people that are involved probably know how to work these things out better. I don't know, this is, all happened Friday, and we couldn't do our due diligence to talk to people because of the holiday, so I'm sad, this is all coming up when Julie's not here, the holiday and all this, and I pray we can all get it worked out so people can get taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Additional business? Julie, you still there?
Yep.
Comment?
I'll, I'll, I'll give my comment at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Non-Rada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we do have a fiduciary duty, our responsibility, we're held to the highest standard.
standards, and I believe we need to do the right to our taxpayers, and I think we should remove all the barriers where communication is a huge factor, and if we could open up the doors to it, and sit, and bring, and come to some conclusion, consensus, I think that would be a win-win situation for our townships and our taxpayers.
Okay. Bruce?
In light of what was said earlier, um, can this issue be taken up again at the January 2nd organizational meeting?
No.
Yes, it can.
Yes, it can.
It can.
I thought the organizational meeting was only, 'cause I tried to bring this up before, and they said, "This is the organizational meeting, and this is all so we can do at this meeting," and I think, "Let me bring things up."
We can put it on the agenda, we can't necessarily bring stuff from the floor, but we can put it on the agenda.
Can, we put it on the agenda for what?
We can put it on the agenda, we have not generally brought things up from the floor.
So something, and, okay, so it could be on the agenda. Well, I would suggest that it be put on the agenda for the January 2nd meeting, I think that would be wise, whatever, whatever direction you all decide to go.
Okay, we can do that. Ruth, you got a comment?
Well, I just think that, that this issue should have never come before the Board of Commissioners like this today. This should have been settled with, and the reading emergency unit and the hospital, this should have been settled, your attorney and all of you, this should have been settled a long time ago amongst yourselves, and it never should have come up to us, up here, to have to intervene and force this issue. That's what the Commissioners had to do today. As an elected official, we have to have courage, we can't sit back. If we, if we had voted that down today, it would have, you would have just kept going on and on, it wouldn't have, still wouldn't have been resolved, and we can't do that. But I'm sorry that, that you couldn't, um, resolve this on your own. It shouldn't, shouldn't have come to our table. That, that's the way I feel. It's, it's between you and the hospital. It shouldn't have come, shouldn't have come up in front of us. I'm sorry that it, that it did. But, but it did, and we have, we had to take care of it, so...
I will make sure it's on the January 2nd meeting, on the agenda, because it's a pressing issue. And with that, we're adjourned.